This time I would ask that everyone make their way to a seat so that we may begin the meeting. Thank you. Please rise if you are able for the pledge of allegiance. We're just gonna look straight ahead, folks. Oh, I'm sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Ladies and gentlemen, you may be seated. In recognition that today is December 7th, the 83rd anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor, I would now like to invite our Director of Veteran Services, Lou Simaglia, to say a few words.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for allowing me to say a few words today. The Pearl Harbor U.S. Naval Base near Honolulu, Hawaii was the scene of the devastating surprise attack by Japanese forces on December 7th, 1941, just before 8:00 a.m. On that Sunday morning, hundreds of Japanese fighter planes descended on the base, where they managed to destroy or damage nearly 20 American naval vessels, including eight battleships and over 300 airplanes. More than 2,400 Americans died in the attack, including civilians, and another 1,000 people were wounded. The day after the assault, on the 8th December, 1941, President Roosevelt delivered his famous speech to Congress. He started, "Mr. Vice President, Mr. Speaker, Members of the Senate and the House of Representatives," yesterday, December 7th, 1941, a date which will live in infamy. The United States of America was suddenly and deliberately attacked by the Naval and Air Forces of the Empire of Japan. In 1994, Congress made sure December 7th would live in infamy by declaring December 7th as National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. He ended his speech with confidence in our armed forces, with the unbounding determination of our people. "We will gain the inevitable triumph, so help us God." As every community was affected by the effects of that day, the town of Wilmington was also impacted. Many men and women stepped up and joined the military to serve and put themselves in harm's way. Twenty-three brave men from Wilmington gave their lives in service to their country during World War II. They were called the Greatest Generation for a reason. Everyone did something. If you could not join the military, you did rubber drives, metal drives. The women joined and served as nurses, and the ones that worked at home worked in the factories. They truly were the Greatest Generation, and we must never forget those who sacrificed so much for the freedoms we enjoy every day. So on this Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, we must pledge to always remember, and we must live up to the standard that they set, and we must resist our enemies in any and every way and try to leave those who come after us an America that is as great as ever. God bless our troops, and God bless the United States of America.
Thank you, Mr. Simaglia. Folks, welcome to the Joanne M. Benton Auditorium at Wilmington High School for a special town meeting. My name is Jonathan Eaton, and I have the duty, honor, and privilege to serve as your town moderator. Our open-town meeting, the most direct form of democracy, meets today, and you, the registered voters of the town of Wilmington, are going to make a lot of important decisions today to direct your town government. I have a few announcements before we get started. The high school cafeteria has been set up as an overflow room if needed, which is equipped with a monitor and a microphone. Mary Osgood has been sworn in as an alternate moderator to attend to this room if the need arises, and I want to personally thank Mrs. Osgood for volunteering to help ensure resident access to our direct democracy. Individuals are not permitted to bring any food or drink into the auditorium, but the Wilmington High School class of 2028 is having a bake sale in the cafeteria. Bathrooms are located outside of the auditorium to the right of the doors that you entered the building through. If you do use the bathroom, please take your voting card with you so that we know that you have already checked in. Everyone should have a copy of the warrant for today's meeting, which is available on the table that you passed as you entered the auditorium, as well as a letter from me explaining some of the procedural mechanisms which may take place during today's proceedings. Throughout the entrance of the auditorium, there are posters hanging up that include a QR code. A QR code is a square, black-and-white image that looks a little bit like a barcode. If you point your smartphone camera at the QR code, a link will pop up, which will bring you to the town's website, where the warrant and other materials relative to today's meeting are as well. At this town meeting, in addition to complying with the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Wilmington inhabitant bylaws, we will use the same rules that we use at every town meeting. If you wish to speak on the merits of an article, I would ask that you approach one of the four microphones placed in the aisles of the auditorium. I will call on those whom I see first at the microphones. Please identify your name and address so that we may accurately report the minutes of today's meeting. All motions or amendments having to do with the expenditures of money or the amendment of any bylaw must be presented to me in writing and signed, and those are all five articles on today's warrant. So if you are planning on making a motion or planning on amending any motion, I will need to have that in writing. The maker of the main motion can have up to 10 minutes to address the assembly. All other speakers can have up to five minutes during discussion of a main motion. If you hear me tapping on the microphone, that is your cue that there are 30 seconds remaining and to begin to wind down your comments. No person may speak twice on the same question except to correct a mistake or make an explanation. When a motion will amend, all speakers can have up to five minutes for comments, and debate is limited to 20 minutes total. So if there is a motion to amend, once debate starts, a vote on that motion will amend will come 20 minutes later, even if there are individuals waiting to speak who have not yet had an opportunity to do so. All five articles will be drawn randomly pursuant to our inhabitant bylaws, Chapter 90, Section 10B and 10C. Non-voters should have yellow non-voter lanyards, and should be seated to my right in front of the auditorium or in the overflow section in the cafeteria. We have reserved a row within the non-voter section for our friends in the press who might be here to observe. Voters should have, what I'm told is, a cerulean-colored voting card, which should be displayed for any standing votes so that the tellers can count you. Tellers sitting in the front, I would ask that if any of the individuals to my right or left wish to speak, and you notice that, please wave your hand and otherwise get my attention in case my peripheral vision fails me. If you are not sure what we are voting on, please raise your hand to make a point of order. I want to make sure that everyone is completely aware and understands what we are voting for at all times during today's meeting. Most importantly, we will deal with each other respectfully, even where there may be issues, where there is disagreement. We understand that not everyone feels the same way about all the issues. However, we do want people to feel comfortable participating in town meeting, sharing opinions, and asking questions. Therefore, at this meeting, like all town meetings, we expect people to refrain from personal attacks, discussion not related to the matter at hand, and discussion raised for the sole purpose of disrupting the assembly, and addressing any other member by name with all discussion to be through the moderator. Prior to today's meeting, I did submit an affidavit with the town clerk's office attesting that I do not have any conflicts of interest with any of the articles in the warrant. I have not taken any public positions on any of the issues contained therein, and I have the ability to fairly administer to the conduct of today's meeting. Do want to thank the tellers, the Public Buildings Department, the Police and Fire Departments, the IT Department, Town Council, the Town Manager's Office, the Town Clerk's Office, and all town employees and volunteers who put in work to make today possible. Lastly, I want to thank our friends at WCTV who are broadcasting today's proceedings for the benefit of viewers at home and recording today for future viewing. Hearing no objections, I declare that the rules of the meeting to have been approved by unanimous consent, and we can begin. Greetings in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and in the manner prescribed of the bylaws of said town. You are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town qualified to vote in town affairs to meet and assemble at the Joanne M. Benton Auditorium at Wilmington High School, 159 Church Street in said town of Wilmington, on Saturday, the 7th of December, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. Then and there to act on the following articles, Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good morning, everyone. I move that the moderator dispense with further reading of the warrant and take up and make reference to each article by number.
Motion is made. Is there a second? Motion has been made, and second is discussion. Seeing none, if you are in favor of dispensing further reading of the warrant and taking up each article by number, so indicate by saying aye. Opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. We're gonna go right into random draw. Article 2. Article 2 is located on page 8 in your warrant. Article 2 is to amend Section 6.5.3 of the zoning bylaws by adding the following to the end of the second paragraph. Final action on site plans for allowed uses per Table 1, principal use regulations shall be limited to approval or approval with the imposition of reasonable conditions, Mr. Boland.
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw to make changes to the Site Planner Review Section 6.5 as printed in the warrant.
Except that as a main motion, is there a second? Motion has been made, and seconded, Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 2. Planning Board recommends approval of Article 2, Mr. Boland.
I'll turn it over to the Planning Director, Ms. Gingrich.
Ms. Gingrich.
Thank you. Good morning. I do have a brief, Valerie Gingrich, I'm the Director of Planning Conservation for the town. I do have a brief overview presentation to explain the article. Just getting a nice little preview of another article. Well, while that's happening, so this article, Article 2, it makes a clarification to our zoning bylaw. And the clarification is to the Site Planner Review section of the bylaws, 6.5. And that section is what the Planning Board uses to do Site Planner Review. And you're probably wondering, what is Site Planner Review? Site Planner Review, here we go. I'll take the next. Okay, so Site Planner Review is conducted by the Planning Board, and it looks at the layout of a proposed development. So what does the parking lot layout look like? Are the aisles big enough? Can the fire truck kind of circulate through it? Is the stormwater designed correctly? Does it meet our bylaws? Does it meet state requirements? Is the landscaping appropriate? We actually have an interior parking lot landscaping requirement. Are they providing shade trees to offset the heat from the pavement? And so on. And those things are looked at by the Planning Board through that process, Site Planner Review. What it's not looking at is whether the use is allowed or not. So the use being allowed is a separate permit, and this permit, Site Planner Review, is just how that site is laid out and how it will function. So the next slide. So if a use is allowed per the bylaw, then the Planning Board, and this is currently the case, the Planning Board can't deny Site Planner Review for that use, but they can put reasonable conditions on it. So this is currently the use of the case, and our bylaw isn't crystal clear about that. So we would like to add a sentence to our bylaw to make it very clear that "Final action on site plans for allowed uses per Table 1, principal use regulations shall be limited to approval or approval with the imposition of reasonable conditions." So it's really just a clarification that is currently the case. It's how the board operates, and it's a clarification that should be made regardless of any other articles today. And I will be happy to take any questions.
Further discussion on Article 2.
Michelle Feeney, 5 Arlene Ave. Planning Director, can you give an exact example so that, in layman's terms, what that means for the majority of us? Thank you.
Okay, so if, let's say the Planning Board is reviewing a proposal for an office building in the general business district. So office is an allowed use in the general business district. They're looking at, through Site Planner Review, they're looking at, like I said, the parking, all of those things, right? The layout of the site. They cannot then say, "We don't like that office use. We're gonna deny your Site Planner Review." But, so they can't do that. There, if the office use is allowed, they have to approve the Site Planner Review. Now, they could say, "Oh, well, you're, you know, you need to add 1% of more landscaping to the plan, and that's a condition we're gonna put on your approval." They can put conditions on it, but they can't deny the use because the use is allowed. And I'm hoping that helped.
Further comment on Article 2. I see none. We're gonna go for the vote. Ladies and gentlemen, oh, I'm sorry. In the back.
Susan Stewart, 169, sorry, took me a minute to untangle. But maybe what would help is, why? Why would there be a problem with the final action? The lady who was speaking explained about why we should, but why would they want to deny it? Or not?
Ms. Gingrich, perhaps if you could provide an illustration.
You had an example of why there would be, but what would be a problem?
Sure, so let's say, let's say the Planning Board is reviewing a car wash. A car wash is a special permit use through, so you would have to get a special permit for the use through the Board of Appeals. Let's say the Board of Appeals says, yes, you know, what's the car wash? Golden Nozzle on Main Street. Yes, we feel like this is an appropriate use for this location. What if the Planning Board doesn't agree with that for some reason? They think, "Oh, this is a terrible use for this property." Well, they don't get to rule on that because the ZBA has already said this use is allowed through a special permit. So the Planning Board can't then, through Site Planner Review, say, "Well, you know, we don't like, we don't like the use, so we're gonna deny your Site Planner Review." Site Planner Review is strictly just the layout of the site, not what's being proposed as the use.
Ms. Stewart, if you have further inquiry on this.
So the point of this bylaw change is to specify explicitly that the Site Planner Review must be limited to approval or not approval. They can't just say, "We don't like the name Golden Nozzle, and it should be Bronze Nozzle."
Just deal with this as you wish, Ms. Gingrich.
Okay. This article is a clarification of what's currently the case in case law and in the board's practice, that with an allowed use, you can either approve it with no conditions, it's perfect, or what we always do is approve it with certain conditions. But you can't deny it. And so that's, and our bylaw doesn't say that.
So right now, maybe the Planning Board could deny it for some weird reason because it isn't explicitly stated that they can't.
I'm gonna interject for a second. Excuse me, to the individual in the back, there is no handing out of materials inside of the auditorium. You're welcome to do so outside of the auditorium, but it is disruptive to do so inside of the auditorium. Ms. Gingrich.
Our bylaw right now says that you, that the board could approve it, approve it with conditions, or deny it. And they cannot deny it. So we, so this sentence will take that option out for the allowed uses.
There we go. Thank you.
I saw first, Mr. O'Grady, and we're gonna go to the, we knew that one.
Just a quick question, was there something that took place in the town that caused us to come forward?
Yes, so the process of developing the article that'll be presented for Article 1, we received state feedback on whether that article was appropriate, and some other feedback that they gave us was pointing out, actually, this bylaw that doesn't meet kind of state requirements in case law currently. So they pointed it out, but like I said, this is a change that, regardless of other articles, that we should make to be accurate.
Thank you.
Kirk Baker, 50 Lawrence Street. May I ask, is the Planning Board endorsing this proposal?
The Planning Board has recommended approval of Article 2, yes.
And also, is the state, the state is requiring this, right? The state is actually, has a requirement that this be passed, that the 3A zoning bylaw be passed by December 31st, is that correct?
Ms. Gingrich.
This is a separate article that is separate from that article. This change will help us not have any conflicting or inappropriate language in our bylaw generally.
So this is just for the amendment to the, to this bylaw?
So this is not the MBTA Community Zoning Act article? This is a separate and distinct article. That will be Article 1, which will come up at some point later.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir?
Bob Boyes, 23 Allen Park Drive in Wilmington. It says reasonable conditions. Who makes the decision on reasonable conditions? And it's kind of open-ended, so I'd like a better explanation of that final paragraph there.
I may defer to legal counsel, but
Excuse me, excuse me, again, sir, in the back. If you want to be handing out paperwork, you can do so outside of the auditorium. You cannot be blocking an egress and handing out things. It is disruptive to the assembly. Ms. Gingrich, you can continue.
Okay, so the, who decides what's reasonable? Typically, the courts do, if it comes to it. So if the Planning Board says, "These are reasonable conditions we're putting on to your project," and the applicant disagrees with that, then, you know, the appeal process would decide what is and isn't reasonable.
Move the question.
Mr. Melaroni?
Do you need to respond to that?
You may, yeah.
Thank you. Paul Melaroni, 176 Middlesex Avenue. So I'm bothered by the word reasonable conditions also. Are the conditions that would be imposed a part of the planning regulations somewhere else? Or would they be arbitrary conditions? And I know you said there's an appeals process, and you, process, and you mentioned the applicant, but the applicant, in many cases, is the homeowner. And I imagine that appeals process comes with a cost. I'll wait for that answer.
So first, Site Planner Review is for commercial and industrial and multifamily uses proposed in town. Site Planner Review is not done for single-family homes. So it would be, you know, a development company or a commercial property owner. The conditions that are placed on, typical conditions that are placed on a project, you know, running through, like, you know, prior to construction, they have to put up erosion controls so that stuff's not running off the site. They have to have a pre-construction meeting. During construction, you know, they have to follow certain hours. So it's a whole rundown of conditions. Typically, if there's, needs to be a change to the plan, it's so that the plan complies with our bylaw. But usually, those things are worked out before, before there's an approval, right? So the, we're gonna, our department comments on the project. We give them a list of comments. They go back, they change their plan, and change it so that they're meeting the bylaw, and then there's an approval that the Planning Board considers. So typically, it's really kind of ironed out during the process. It's very rare that you would get to the end of the process and have a condition that everyone doesn't agree on. But it can happen.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on Article 2?
Just one more question, Michelle Feeney, 5 Arlene Ave. I'm just curious why this is coming up now at this special meeting? Is there a reason why this was added to this special meeting? Just wondering why now, I thought it was supposed to be the 3A, so.
Yeah, so the 3A process, as I mentioned before, the 3A process, when we submitted our draft to the state, they flagged our Site Planner Review bylaw as having something that's kind of inconsistent with case law, and so they flagged it for us. But we'll be doing this, you know, should this not succeed today, we'll be proposing it in the future. It has, it should be done no matter what happens with the 3A zoning.
So the state is saying that any planning board in the town cannot deny the way the site's being used? You're saying that the state is saying the local town planning board cannot deny anything, and you're looking to remove that language? Because the state said that. I just want to be clear.
The state flagged it, but case law says that the board, so it's not just the state, like, all
The Constitution, I don't, when you say case law, I just imagine that a lot of folks don't understand what case law means. I don't, so what does that mean?
To Attorney Rich.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just for clarification, I think it's very important to recognize that the special town meeting addresses a few things other than the 3A MBTA zoning. This is an issue that came up during review of the town's zoning bylaws, and as, as the Planning Directors talked about, this is an issue that is not, not specific to Wilmington, but it's not a mandate of the state. I know that's the concern with the 3A discussion that we're going to be having when that comes up. This is really a cleanup item. I don't think we were even expecting to have this level of debate, only because, again, it's intended to clean up an issue that, whether you have this language or not, this is the standard that will be applied. It's not, again, a mandate by the state. It's been determined, case law being decisions of courts that interpret the process for Site Planner Review. This has nothing to do with other reviews that might be under, or other approvals that might be undertaken through the town. It's strictly with respect to Site Planner Review. It's strictly with respect to the plan as presented and the review of that plan, the imposition of reasonable, not arbitrary, but reasonable conditions. And again, it is not something that's being mandated. It was simply pointed out that this was an inconsistency based upon the law as it stands currently.
Thank you for simplifying. I think the fact that it's just a cleanup, it's an oops, we forgot to do this correctly the first time, clarifies it, I think, for a lot of people, including myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
In the back.
Bronwyn Jones, 126 Grove Ave. I would like to move the question.
Could you just say your name again? I think you just won a popularity contest.
Bronwyn Jones.
I was joking, but I appreciate you playing along. All right, so, for those of you who may not be familiar, a motion to move the previous question would effectively end debate. It is a procedural mechanism whereby, if it passes by a two-thirds majority, the maker of the main motion, which would be Mr. Boland, would have up to 10 minutes to address the assembly if he so chooses. He may give his time back to the meeting or yield to any other member. But it would effectively end debate because if that were to pass, we would then go straight into the binary decision of whether or not the motion on Article 2 would pass. So if you are in favor of the motion to move the previous question and end debate on Article 2, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Voted. So, Mr. Boland, you may address the assembly. He's indicating that he has given his time back to the meeting and making some more friends. So. Yeah, so this is a two-thirds majority vote, so I would ask that the tellers take to their places, and that if you are a registered voter, that you do find your way to a seat. If you wish your vote to be counted again, please find your way to a seat. I'm speaking to the gentleman in the back. If you wish your vote to be counted, I'm gonna need you to get to a seat quickly because we're gonna do a standing vote. All right, if you are in favor of Article 2 passing as written in the warrant, please rise in your seat and rise in your seat and hold your cerulean-colored voting card. All right, you may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, the right, results on the motion on Article 2 is 343 in the affirmative 52, and the negative, the measure passes. Back on random draw. Article 3 is also on page 8 in your warrant, which is to amend the zoning bylaw to delete the current inclusionary zoning, Section 6.11, in its entirety and replace it with a new Section 6.11. Mr. Boland?
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw to delete the current inclusionary zoning, Section 6.11, in its entirety and replace it with the new Section 6.11 as printed in the warrant.
I'll accept that as the main motion, is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 3. Planning Board recommends approval of Article 3. Mr. Boland?
Thanks. Again, I'll ask the planning director to explain.
Ms. Gingrich?
Thank you. Valerie Gingrich is the Director of Planning Conservation for the town. I do have an explanation of the article, so you can go to the next. So, Section 6.11, Inclusionary Housing Bylaw, this is our existing section in the bylaw that requires that when multifamily housing is built in town, that it include a portion of it as affordable housing. So right now, that, that portion is 15%. So some examples, the Cross Street Development that's being constructed right now, that's 18 rental units, three of those are going to be affordable. And another example, Rachel's Village at 168 Lowell Street, 36 townhomes there, and five of those were sold as affordable. But just a, I got some questions recently about what affordable means, so I'd like to kind of explain that to everybody. The term often gets criticism because when you hear the numbers that go with it, it's not what you think of as affordable. So let me just go through what it means, and this is the definition that's, you know, across the state, and this is the definition that's in our bylaw. It's 80% of the area median income. So it's not just Wilmington's median income, it's the area, the larger area.
Ms. Gingrich, I'm going to interject again with apologies to the individual in the back. This is now the third time that I've had to instruct you to, if you're going to be handing out materials, you have to do so outside of the auditorium, you cannot be blocking any aggress. Thank you, Ms. Gingrich.
Sure. So, area median income, that number is $148,900. So that's the area median income for us. So 80% of that, an individual could make 80% of that area median income, so they could earn up to $91,200 a year, and still qualify for that affordable unit. So that's why it gets some criticism, that it's, well, it's not really that affordable. Rent prices for the affordable units, so for Cross Street, they'll be able to charge for a one-bedroom, they'll be able to charge $2,442 a month. So for a two-bedroom, they'll be able to charge $2,931 a month. So again, when folks hear those numbers, it doesn't quite match an affordable. It is more affordable than market rate, maybe, but it often is criticized as not quite that affordable. So, and another note on that, that folks who apply for these units, so their income is, is, is looked at and verified, so that they're making, you know, under the limit, but to be able to pay those rents, they're going to have to make really close to that limit. So it's a really kind of, not a wide delta there. So, so that's, hopefully, that's a little bit on what affordable means, and you can go to the next slide. And next. So, if you all decide to create the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, Article 1, this article requires that there be a percentage of the housing that's affordable, right? So it would add that requirement to the new district. And next, so in the applicability section of Section 6.11, if you create that district, so we're going to be adding the MBTA Communities Overlay District to the list of districts, multifamily districts, where you have to provide a percentage of affordable units. And next. And just a note on that, it helps us, so as more housing is built in town, we still have to keep up with that 10% requirement overall, because that's the threshold where if we're keeping up with the 10% affordable requirement in town, then 40B developments can't come in and sort of override our zoning. So the goal is to try to keep the 10% up, and as you're building housing, this provision has you build a portion of it affordable so that we're not decreasing our percentage of affordable units. So per the legislation and the guidelines, we're allowed to have a 10% affordable requirement in this MBTA community zoning. You're allowed to do higher if you have an economic feasibility analysis that says that your market supports a higher percent. So what we did is we got a, we got a grant from the state to do an independent economic feasibility analysis, and that study showed that our existing 15% requirement is supported by the market, which really wasn't a surprise because, you know, Rachel's Village, Cross Street, they're being built with that requirement. So it's obviously the market supports it. Okay, and the next slide. So the proposal is to require 15% of this new district, should you, you know, which is up for debate later. And next, but because the state has to approve the 15%, because it's higher, they have to, you know, look at our feasibility analysis and approve the 15%. We've done all the things that should lead to them approving it, but it's still up for their approval. So what we did was we wrote in kind of a fail-safe, if for some reason they don't approve that 15%, then we'd fall back to the 10% that we're allowed to do with no questions asked. So that's how we wrote it up. And next slide. And so if the MBTA Communities Overlay District is created, Article 1, then this article requires that 15%, or if everything goes terribly with 15%, 10%, would be required in that new district. If you don't approve Article 1, then this article is going to be useless. So it's really, whether or not that article passes, this will be a requirement, and I'm happy to take any questions on this.
Discussion on Article 3. Mr. West?
Good morning, everyone. A quick question. Because Article 1's, 1 and Article 3 seem to be tied together, is there a way to suspend Article 3 and vote on Article 1 at this time, and then if Article 1 passes, bring this up? And if Article 1 fails, make this a moot point?
Not at this point, Mr. West. Just by way of explanation, I am unfortunately going to have to cite chapter and verse for you from the inhabitant bylaws, Chapter 90, Section 10B, which includes, which is the section that governs random selection, random draw. It does provide that quoting certain articles which are in sequence and related to each other whereby passage of the first article is dependent upon action of the next article that may be drawn as one drawing for action. Unfortunately, these are not in sequence because of the inconvenience of Number 2, and there is not that relationship of dependency. So while I can understand the concern, I am duty-bound to follow the inhabitant bylaws. Ms. Shukas?
We're just beating around the bush. Every article you're going to vote on until you get to Article 1 pretends to Article 1. Everything. So, just take the articles, vote them out, then get to Article 1.[1564.83][1564.83](APPLAUSE).
All right, Ms. Shukas, I think you just put the woman in the back on notice that you're trying to win that popularity contest.[1577.21][1577.21](LAUGHTER). Further discussion on Article 3. All right, seeing none, I would ask that the tellers take their place. Again, this is an article that requires a two-thirds majority, so if you are intending on vote, please find your way to a seat so that the tellers may count your vote. All right, if you are in favor of Article 3 passing as written in the warrant, please rise in your seat and display your cerulean-colored voter card so the tellers may count you. Thank you, you may be seated. All right, if you are opposed to Article 3 passing, so indicate by rising in your seats You may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, on Article Three, the vote is as follows, 217 in the affirmative, 196 in the negative. Again, this does require a two-thirds quantum, so the measure fails. We are back on random draw. Article Four, for sum of money for the purpose of paying unpaid bills of previous years, Mr. Kira.
Good morning, Mr. Moderator. I moved at the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,111.80 for the purpose of paying an invoice inquired in FY 2023 to SHI International Corporation for the town's e-code subscription and account fiscal year 2025 operating budget, informational technology, miscellaneous contractual services.
Thank you, Mr. Kira. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Four. Discussion. Mr. Slagel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the body. On occasion, vendors that the town uses submit their bills in an untimely manner. In this case, we got a bill from the vendor that we use to put our e-code, which is the town's general bylaws and zoning bylaws on the internet, and that vendor submitted their bill late. We, as a municipality, are not allowed to pay late bills without town meeting coming in authorizing us to pay bills from prior fiscal years. So because this is a bill that was incurred in FY 2023, we do need approval of town meeting to pay it. We did receive the services, we did have e-code for the times that this invoice was billed for. So, $4,111.80. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Further discussion on Article Four. All right, seeing none, I will, by way of explanation, because this is an article for the purpose of paying unpaid bills from previous years, and because this is a special town meeting, the quantum of vote to pass is nine tenths. So I'm going to try this by a voice vote. If you are in favor of the sum of $4,111.80 for the purposes of paying an invoice that occurred in fiscal 2023 to SHI International Corporation for the town's e-code subscription, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
You're opposed, say no. We are back on random draw. With apologies, folks, it's Article Five. The bucket wants a real suspenseful moment, and the bucket gets what it wants.
Good morning, Mr. Moderator. Good morning, Wilmington. I moved at the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article 22 of the April 25, 2020 annual town meeting, as continued to June 27, 2020, to raise and appropriate an additional $530,000 for a total of $980,000, as writ, and I defer to the town manager at this time.
I'm going to accept that as the main motion, Mr. DePalma. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Five. Mr. DePalma yields to the town manager, Mr. Slagel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the body. As members of town meeting who were here back in 2020 may remember, the town at that time appropriated $450,000 for the eminent domain taking of property at 64 Wildwood Street that was abutting in the Wildwood Cemetery. In the intervening time, the individuals who was the owner of the property has, through council, provided the town with a alternate value to the property. As is often the case in eminent domain cases, the two sides don't necessarily agree on the value of the property that is being taken. This is not unusual. The, the, the original appraisal that was done by the town was based on the assumption that there was a single house lot on the property. They presented us with evidence that if the house had been torn down, it could be broken up into three housing lots, which obviously changed the value of the property. In an effort to force our litigation and come to a settlement on this, we, we, we reached an agreement with the party subject to, obviously the town meeting's approval, to pay an additional $530,000 because of the increased value of the lot. That does include relocation costs, which are another thing that a party is entitled to in an eminent domain case. Again, town council can tell you, this is a regular happening in eminent domain. Parties have disagreements over value, and in an effort to come to a settlement, this is the funds, the amount that we've reached. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Slagel. Further discussion on Article Five.
Why is the town...
Sir, if you wish to speak, I'd ask that you approach one of the microphones to ask your question, but I saw Mr. McDonald approached the microphone first, so, Mr. McDonald, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the town manager. Can you correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that this is a pre-litigation settlement?
Either Mr. Slagel or Mr. Rich.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you. This is, there is no litigation that exists at this, at this time. We would anticipate that if the town does not appropriate funds and, and pay additional funds for this, this, this property acquisition, that we would likely wind up in court. We were approached by the, the owners of, or the former owners of the property, the property has been taken by the town. The, the issue, of course, was what is allowable on that property? And as, as the town manager explained, based upon the inquiries from the owner, the town itself did a further evaluation and determined that based upon the circumstance on the property, it could be divisible into three lots instead of one lot, and that rather than, rather than allowing this to proceed to litigation, council reviewed the, the issue with, with opposing council, and a settlement was reached to allow this dollar amount to proceed to town meeting. But this is not a matter that's currently in litigation.
And could you please, through you, Mr. Moderator, give us the name of the opposing council?
No, this is Mr. McDonald. This is, this is, you're going to let me finish, Mr. McDonald. This is, this is merely an article, and a motion on an article to appropriate funds to resolve that dispute, to finalize the taking at 64 Wildwood Street. Who opposing council is is irrelevant.
Okay, Mr. Moderator. One of my concerns is that I was made aware of some issues related to this property. Eminent domain requires a town to provide moving expenses and money for people that are having to vacate the building. Prior to this, I was told that our previous town manager went to the home, the home had...
Mr. McDonald, is your question whether or not the previous amount that was allocated in the 2020 town meeting, including, inclusive of relocation expenses?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Is your question whether or not the amount that was appropriated for this same property in the 2020 annual town meeting, inclusive of relocation expenses?
No, my, my comments are relative this, to this specific article, which is asking for additional money, and my concern is that there could be additional lawsuits for harassment.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, this is, this is clearly not related to the matter.
How can it not be related to the matter, Mr. Moderator, if we're looking for a pre-settlement?
Mr. McDonald, you're going to let me finish again. This is merely asking this assembly to authorize a sum of $530,000 for this acquisition. Any, any potential of outside litigation is unrelated to Article Five.
So, Mr. Moderator, let me try to clarify my question. Does this agreement include any potential lawsuit from happening? Excluded?
You're, you're trying to get at the same point that I'm telling you is, is out of order and outside of the scope of Article Five.
Okay, thank you.
Further comment on Article Five. Yes?
I have a question. I bought the house in 2000s. I know the town want, you know, develop the, the town, but I bought the house in 2000s. My property tax was around $2,000. But right now, my property tax is over $10,000, though, you know, that is four times increased.
So I, I, I appreciate the concern that you're raising here, but this is a, a meeting with a limited number of issues that we can discuss, that is limited by the warrant. I would encourage you to meet with the assessor's office or the treasure collector's office to discuss that, and I know that they...
Because we talked about the expense and about this property, but in general, I just think the town, I would like know, and the town collect much, much more money than 2000s, then, you know, why we care about this property? That is a small amount.
I, I can, I appreciate your concern. I know that I don't have an answer for you, and I know that probably the best place to get that answer is to, to call the town assessor's office and the treasure collector's office and, and schedule a meeting, and I know they'd be glad to talk to you. Further comments on Article Five. Ms. Shukas, I'm going to go first to Ms. Stewart, and then to you.
Yes, Susan Stewart, 1169 Shawshin. $500,000 is a lot of money. It's a half a million dollars. I would be curious, while it is important when exercising eminent domain to make sure that there is a equitable return for the owner who is being domained, have we looked at the opportunity cost of what else the town could do with $500,000? You know, provide money for teachers and things? And my question would be, what would happen to this, what would happen in this situation if we do not vote the $500,000? Does that mean that the town then gets back the other $400,000 and the, the land goes back to the original owner? Or do we leave it in limbo, or do we hope nobody sues?
Okay, there's, there's a couple of questions in there. I just want to clarify, the motion was for $530,000, but to Attorney Rich. Two questions to you. First, what would happen if, I'm going to try to frame this as, as best I can, what would happen if this was not passed in the affirmative? What would happen with the property and the money's already spent?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I think I'm going to actually answer the questions in reverse, simply because the town, as, as you recall, in 2020 actually voted to acquire this property by eminent domain, and, and, and as a part of eminent domain process, municipality taking the property must, must pay what's called a protanto payment, which is based upon the valuation of the property, fair market value. At that time, that was done, the property was taken, the property now belongs to the town. What usually happens in eminent domain cases, I think the, the town manager alluded to this, is you, you have, you have the taking, for proper public purpose, the property becomes the town's, the fight becomes over the value of the property. So here, the fight is over the value. So the town, the town has the property, the property is owned by the town, the money that was previously approved by town meeting and was provided to the residents, that money's gone, it's spent, and the property is now ours. It doesn't, the outcome of this would not result in the property going back to the property owner. But what could happen if this, if this is not approved, we would anticipate that the town would then be sued for that dollar amount, and then you'd be, you'd be paying legal costs and other expenses, and ultimately, if, if you look at the valuation, and we did have an appraisal, the town had an appraisal, the appraisal was predicated on the property being limited to a single house lot, if you look at what the valuation was for a single house lot, and you extrapolate it out now to three house lots, you'll notice that the, the, the price didn't go up by, by the, the 200%. So, so, you know, to, to fully compensate based upon that original dollar amount that town meeting paid in 2020. So it was, it was a, a lower value when, when it was, when it was looked at in the aggregate. But if the town chooses not to do this, I would imagine that in litigation, the other side would seek a higher dollar amount, and so the town would have additional exposure. This is a, a negotiated amount, it's consistent with, with the prior appraisal for an individual house lot. I certainly understand the concern, what else could you do with this money? But the reality is, that's not going to be the choice you're going to be given, because ultimately, if this isn't, if this is not paid, we will be litigating this matter in court and facing that exposure. And ultimately, if it is, if it is shown in a court that the town's original appraisal was not adequate and does not reasonably compensate the property owner for the, the fair market value of their property, then the town will be expected to pay more, and based upon our own evaluation, we do believe that this is a three-house lot, lot, as opposed to a single-house lot.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to go to Ms. Shukas, then to Ms. Glezzo, then to Mr. Slagel.
Yes. Are the people happy with the amount of money that they received? We do own this property? Do we own this property?
Mr. Rich?
Yes, we do own this property.
Okay, yes is fine.
They are not happy with the money.
Yes is fine. Why are they not happy? Did they agree to it?
No, they did not. We, eminent domain process is, is, in this case, an adversarial process. The town took the property based upon the town's valuation through an appraisal process. The town appraised it as a single-house lot, and, and what the town is obligated to do is, is pay that amount based upon what the town determined the value to be. That is then subject to challenge. They challenged that amount. That's why we're here.
Fine. What we're voting on is if these people want more money, they want to expand the Wildwood Cemetery, they need the room, it's full. There's, there's no question about that. So why are you bringing this up here if you haven't completed it? This is all hearsay.
Mr. Slagel to clarify.
Yeah, I, I want to clarify a couple of things. The first is, the, the former owner of, of the property, the, the town has been interested in the property for a long time, the town waited for the, the individual to pass away before they actually took it. So that we're dealing with the, the heirs, the estate of the former property owners. There's not an individual who was an owner who was there. Secondly, I think more crucial, this town, the town has taken this property and is using it actively as part of the cemetery. So there are individuals who are currently buried on this, this plot. So we, we have already started using it and are consistently using it. It was a desperate need for the expansion of the cemetery, but the, the property has already been in use by the town for the last several years.
Mr. Moderator, if I, if I just may correct a, a point that I made, because I may have misunderstood the, the question that was asked, and was just pointed out to me. The, the property owners were not happy with the original payment back in 2020. They will be happy with this payment. This is the amount that they have agreed to. So to clarify the point, this amount will make them happy.
Thank you. Ms. Glezzo.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have a motion to move the previous question, which has been seconded. Again, a motion to move the previous question would effectively end debate and call for a vote. Motion to move the previous question is not debatable, so I'll just go straight into a vote. If you are in favor of any debate on Article Five and moving straight to a vote, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, say no. Voted unanimously. So, on Article Five, we are going to, I'm going to again apologize to our tellers for the cardio today, but this does require a two-thirds majority, so I would ask that you take your places.
If you are looking to have your vote counted on Article 5, I would ask that you take a seat again, because we do have a standing vote. All right. If you are in favor of raising and appropriating an additional $530,000 to, on Article 5, please indicate by rising in your seats and displaying your cerulean-colored voter card. You may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, on Article 5, the vote is as follows: 400 in the affirmative, 2 in the negative, the measure passes. You may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, on Article 5, the vote is as follows: 400 in the affirmative, 2 in the negative, the measure passes. We're back on what's left of random draw. Article 1. Please hold your applause till the end. Article 1, to amend the zoning bylaw and associated zoning district map of the town of Wilmington is follows: to create a new MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District. Mr. Boland.
I moved that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw and associated zoning district map of the town of Wilmington to create a new MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Boland. I'll accept that as a main motion. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 1. Planning Board recommends approval of Article 1. Mr. Boland.
Yes, so I'm going to turn it over to the planning director in a minute, but just briefly, as I was considering, and we've been doing this for three years or so, you know, considering my vote, you know, the law is tough. It's heavy-handed and, you know, casts a broad brush over a bunch of towns that all have unique circumstances. But it is a law, and, you know, whether we comply or not, each sort of direction carries a cost. But the way that I see it, one of those directions carries an opportunity as well. Our unique circumstances with our Wilmington zoning is that three of our proposed areas already have housing or are approved by 40B. The fourth is already developed. It's not a greenfield that'll sort of be built up that where we don't have buildings now, in a spot where the town master plan wants to see redevelopment as a walkable streetscape, which this overlay promotes. We use the state's money, and we need it, for essential infrastructure upgrades and repairs. I don't want to lose access to that money or have these essentials not get done because we can't pay for it. I don't think it's worth a fight with the state when our alternative is this opportunity at Main Street to pretty much make lemonade out of lemons. And so with that, I'll turn it over to...
Ms. Gingrich.
Valerie Gingrich, Director of Planning and Conservation, and going to go over a little background and the proposal that's in front of you today. Starting out, this legislation was passed in 2021 when Governor Baker signed it. It comes along with a set of guidelines that act as regulations. So it's both the law and the guidelines that describe what is necessary for compliance. It applies to 177 communities, and it requires as-of-right multifamily housing zoning of a reasonable size, and I'll get into what that means exactly. It's really an attempt to address housing supply. So it's really a market rate requirement. You don't have to do any affordable component to it. As you saw before, we were suggesting to do a small portion as affordable, but this would be market rate housing. So first, a little bit on zoning and what that means. So next, so zoning is not what you have to do, but it's what you could do if you wanted to do. It's a list of options for parcels, and each zone has a list of allowed uses. I'm going to go through an example of that with the general business zone, and you saw maybe a preview of this in the previous discussion. But, so in the general business zone, you could do an office, a brew pub, a restaurant, retail, car wash, and you've probably heard the term "as-of-right." That is, that means that you can do those uses without getting a special approval. John, hit the next one. So you could do an office, a brew pub, a restaurant, retail, in general business, without getting any sort of special permit. You'd still have to go through site plan review, which we talked about. But with a car wash, that's a use, that's a special permit use in that zone. So you'd have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, you'd have to get a special permit, because it may or may not be appropriate depending on the circumstances. So in this case, we're talking about as-of-right multifamily. So you wouldn't have to get a special permit. But on the next slide, zoning is looking at building size, location, parking, open space, and all of that's reviewed by the planning board through site plan review. It also sets up, you know, height allowances and setbacks. So how far your property needs to be from the property line, or your building needs to be from the property line. So it sets up all those rules for development. And next slide. So in this case, the requirement is zoning, the possibility, if, you know, if the ingredients, if the circumstances are right, you could build some multifamily housing. Next, the construction of those, it's, you don't have to do it. A property owner gets to choose. It's just another option that you can do. Perfect. And then the next slide. So what are our requirements specifically? So the district has to be 50 acres minimum, and next, the half of that district has to be within a half mile of the commuter rail station. And next, the unit capacity. I know folks have heard this number before, and a note on that number, the state gives us a spreadsheet to fill out. We have to put in heights, setbacks, we have to put in all the details for every single parcel, and it spits out a theoretical unit count for each parcel. However, the spreadsheet does not take into consideration soil types, whether you have access to sewer or not, or even the full extent of wetlands on your parcel. So the number is not a realistic number that the spreadsheet produces. But that's the number that we need the spreadsheet to get to, and that's the number that, in the proposal that I'll show you, that's, we got to this number with the spreadsheet. That number, though, is not what could actually be built on the ground. So we'll get into that a little bit more. Next slide. So the proposal, in developing the proposal, the planning board kind of put, had to put aside, you know, feelings about the requirement and come up with what was the best proposal we could come up with. The focus was on existing commercial and multifamily areas, so avoiding single-family homes and single-family neighborhoods. We had to avoid the groundwater protection district and floodplain district, which is actually pretty difficult, because there's a lot of groundwater protection districts in town. But those districts require a special permit, and we had to avoid all special permits with this. So we had to avoid all of that. So it kind of constrained where we could look. There was an online survey in 2023. We were at the library, we were at the senior center, we did some, we were at the Fourth of July, we tried to kind of get the word out there with that process. And that survey was really helpful, because we asked folks about different options for locations, and we asked for any ideas for other locations. And then we took those ideas and looked at each one, all the alternatives, to see if there was a better situation than we came up with. So it was really informative. And then I talked about this next one a little bit, but we did that economic feasibility study for the 15% affordable requirement. So all of that led to, the next slide is the MBTA Communities Overlay, Multifamily Overlay District. Overlay District is that the existing zoning, like a general business zone, that stays. This overlay does not wipe that out and take its place, it's just put on top of it. So general business, you could still do the office or the restaurant or all of those things, that's still there. But now you can also choose to do multifamily. It's just an added option on top of the list. So that's what an overlay district does. There's three sub-districts within the half-mile of the train as required, and then there's one next that is outside the half-mile on West Street, and I'll go through each one of those. This zoning only applies to these areas that we're going to look at right now. It's not town-wide, unlike 40B, which could go, you know, anywhere. This zoning is specific to these areas only. So we'll start out with the West Street District, which is outside the half-mile. And I'm going to orient you first. So up on the top is Lowell Street, 129, and then to the right, you can see 93. And kind of the red line kind of going from top to bottom is West Street. So we'll go through each property, there's four. And first, or next, John, in this district, you can do three stories, which is similar to development in town, 20-foot setbacks, similar to other development in town. And then because it's not close to a train station, we have a two-parking space per unit requirement for this, which is typical in town. So first, starting at the top, right behind Mr. Ticket on West Street, there's 100 to 104 West Street. That property, was it last year, I think, last spring, was approved for a 40B development for 132 units, and that is a four-story development, already approved. This zoning does nothing to that. So that proposal's actually moving forward, they're working on their building permit application. So that's already going to be multifamily. So we included it in the district, because it's already going to be multifamily. And then moving down the street, there's the storage facility at 114. That property, I'm told that storage facilities are a pretty good investment, so we included this parcel. It's very unlikely that someone's going to tear down a storage facility and build housing. It's possible, but this parcel's included in that, and we expect that there wouldn't be any change in the near term. Between those two, there's 108 West Street, and that's a single-family home. It's a parcel that's under an acre, it has wetlands, and so it has really limited development. But we had to include that because, to make everything kind of connect. And then across the street, Regency Place is at 121, and that's an existing 40B development, multifamily housing, 120 units, and that is included in this district where you could possibly do multifamily. We already have the multifamily there. And I should note for Regency Place, that 120 units, the spreadsheet, this is an example of how the spreadsheet works. The spreadsheet gives us a much higher number for that site, but the spreadsheet doesn't know that there's no sewer there. So that's an example of how that spreadsheet, that 1248, is not a truly real number. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. So that's the West Street District. The other three are within a half-mile of the Main Street Station, and it's the Main Street Mixed-Use District, the Burlington Ave Subdistrict, and the Deming Way Subdistrict. And I'll go through each one of those next. Starting out with, next, the Burlington Ave Subdistrict. I'll take the next one. All right, there it is. And this sub-district is one parcel. It is the Metro Apartments parcel. So you can go to the next. So this district allows three stories in height, 20-foot setbacks, one and a half parking spaces per unit, and you'll see, you see a picture there of Metro, you're probably familiar with what it looks like. It's a three-story development that has multifamily housing on it. One thing to address is that you see on the outline, the red outline on the map, there's the buildings there with the star on it. There's some wooded area in addition to that, but that wooded area has a conservation restriction on it, so you cannot build on it. So what you're seeing here is really the buildable portion of that parcel is built out. So we included that. Essentially, we're trying to take credit for the multifamily housing that's already been built in town. So this was a spot that we included in the district. Okay, I'll go to the next one. Okay, next is the Deming Way Subdistrict, and this is one parcel as well. It's the housing authorities' parcel on Deming Way off of Burlington Ave, and it's currently senior affordable multifamily housing, and it has 69 units. And at this parcel, you could do three stories in height, 20-foot setbacks. We did decrease the parking requirement here, because in an analysis of the parking that they need on that site, it's much lower. There are a lot less drivers in the senior affordable units. And it is within half a mile of the train, so you could walk to the train if you wanted to, or could. So this district, you could build multifamily, but we, as you can see, we already have multifamily on that district, on that parcel. And then moving on to the last of the sub-districts, the Main Street Mixed-Use Subdistrict. And this is, the map is tilted a little bit, so let me explain. The red line, the top red line is the railroad tracks. The bottom red line is Main Street. And you see the T, the train station, down on the, the lower left. And this district runs from that train station up to the Hyundai dealership, includes the Hyundai dealership, and then all of those uses in between. So it's, it's that side of the street only. So the House of Pizza side of the street, not the Bank of America side of the street. And again, it runs from the trains, the corner of Burlington Ave, up to the Hyundai dealership. A note on the Hyundai dealership. They actually have permits to redevelop that site as a new dealership. That's the largest parcel in this sub-district. So per the spreadsheet, it has the ability to have the most multifamily units on it. However, they've just received all their permits to reconstruct the dealership. And they have a building permit, permit application in right now to, to do that. So it's looking like it's not going to be multifamily housing there. It's going to be a new dealership. So that's a, a note on that one. In this district, next, John, there's a two- or three-story height limit. I'll explain that next. 20-foot setbacks and one and a half parking spaces per unit. Next slide. So we said two to three. The scenario there, the way it's written, is that if you're doing residential only, so let's say you're doing townhomes. You want to do townhomes in this Main Street District. You would be able to do a two-story building. That's what you would be allowed to do. But since it's Main Street, we wanted to incentivize a Main Street type of feel and look and traditional Main Street style with commercial uses on the ground floor, you know, an active street state with, you know, units potentially above it. So, and next, John. If you're going to do a mixed-use, a mixed-use building with commercial, and we, I don't know why we use Pizza, House of Pizza all the time, but the first floor, you could do a retail business, and then you could have two more stories on top of that. And the goal there is to, again, provide that sort of traditional New England style of a Main Street. Okay, next. Some other notes on the Main Street Subdistrict. Three stories in height. That's the limit for a, a commercial, a mixed-use building. That's already allowed on Main Street. You could do a three-story office as of right, you know, tomorrow. So the height is keeping with what we currently allow. And next, residential multifamily is actually already allowed on the other side of Main Street, on the Bank of America side. On that side is the Central Business District. And you could do multifamily on that side of the street currently with a special permit. You haven't seen that happen. And I guess the, the thing to, to comment on there is that zoning, just because you can do it, doesn't mean that it's going to be an immediate change. It doesn't mean it's going to happen, you know, anytime in the near future. It's just a possibility. So it's not an immediate change. Property owners, developers do not have to build residential if it's an option. And we've seen that on the Bank of America side. And next. And then, as the planning board chairman spoke to, mixed-use is envisioned for, for Main Street to make it a more traditional New England downtown type of, of style of development. And it also, you know, adding multifamily to that area could provide some additional options for folks who are not able to stay in their single-family homes or looking to have something smaller. Okay, next slide. So this has been a topic of, of conversation. What, you know, if that 1248 is not a real number, what, what could we expect as a real number of, of potential development? And running through that, we're going to, making the assumption that the following item, the following parcels do not change. So let's say the Housing Authority stays the same for now. The Metro 40B Development, the Metro Apartments, that really is built out, so let's assume that stays the same. Regency Place is built out. Let's say that stays the same. 100 West Street is an approved project that they're working on their building permit plans. Let's assume that gets built as it's already approved. Let's say the storage facility remains and that the Hyundai dealership is redeveloped as a new Hyundai dealership, like they're proposing. Then if we take those items out of the equation, next, what can we assume that there's possible development? And those items would be that single-family parcel on West Street, which, again, it's under an acre. It has wetlands. It doesn't have sewer. So the spreadsheet says 12. I don't, I don't know about that. With all of those constraints, it's likely to be very much less than 12. For Main Street, from the corner of Burlington Ave up to the Speedway, that portion of the district, the spreadsheet says 177. Again, with the constraints that are there, you know, that may or may not be an actual number. But those are some of the examples of, of businesses that are in that district that, in theory, could become a, a ground-floor use to a new development. I've also talked to folks who, folks have approached me and said that they looked at, developers who have looked at the zoning, and they said, "Well, you know, the numbers don't work out for Main Street." So where this is a possibility for multifamily, you may not see it, especially right away. Okay. So next slide. Other components of this. Next. There are streetscape requirements in the zoning. So the goal is to make it a pedestrian-friendly, walkable, you know, extra-wide sidewalks with storefronts right on the street, parking behind. So there's design guidelines that try to make it a pedestrian-friendly environment on Main Street. We talked about the affordable, so we'll skip that. And then we also talked about the clarification to 6.5. And next. So where are we at with this? The deadline, the reason we're here is the deadline is the end of the year for the zoning to be adopted. This, this is actually an old number from last week when I turned this in. Where it's up to 111 communities have adopted the zoning to comply. So this is a little bit dated. But, you know, some of those communities, surrounding towns, Andover, Burlington, Reading, Woburn. And I think the RICA is, is this week they're having a vote on this. Okay, next slide. So we'll get into why would we want to comply with this and things that you all need to consider when you're looking at this. First, we would eliminate any risk of, in that legislation, there's a, it alludes to funding for the Housing Authority. I have been in touch with the state about this question because it's been bothering me because it's been a little bit vague. Still a little vague. But I asked them about the Housing Authority funding being impacted by a vote on this. And they said that for this fiscal year, it will not be impacted. I asked them, "Okay, but what about beyond this fiscal year?" And they didn't answer me. So I don't know. But voting on the, approving this would eliminate that risk. And to the next one. Obviously, we've been talking about the grants that are involved in, in, in this vote. And I'm going to go through some of those because we have received a substantial amount of funding in the past five years especially. And I'll go through some of those examples in the next slide. All right. So we received $3.89 million of a MassWorks grant for the Lubbers Brook Culvert over 62, right at Eli's. The grant was also for a sewer extension. The culvert piece of it was about $2.3 million. That culvert needed to be replaced. And through this grant, it, this grant paid for that culvert replacement. We would not be eligible for MassWorks grants if we did not comply with the, the zoning requirement. And next slide. So more recent, actually just this year, I think at, at the last town meeting, we were saying we were applying for this grant. Well, we did receive it. We, we received the 200 and, 200, $321,000 grant for design and permitting of the culvert. It's a deteriorating culvert at Martins Brook. So that's on 62, as you're heading towards North Reading, right before Shea. That's the culvert that you go over. And you can kind of, you see the water on both sides. So you can tell you're going over a culvert. That culvert needs to be replaced. And we were told we need to, by inspections, we need to start permitting and designing that culvert and get it in process to be replaced. So we did receive that money. When you receive a design grant, you're likely to get a construction grant. So the goal here would be to apply for a construction grant up to $3 million. Lubbers Brook Culvert costs $2.3, so, you know, assuming that it's similar, we would apply for that grant should we stay compliant with the, with the, the zoning requirement. And we did have a meeting on that culvert design and the representative from the MVP program. We talked about this vote coming up, and she said that we should stay in touch. So I don't know. Yeah. So we don't know what would happen to our funding that we have currently. The hope is that it will stay in place and we'll complete the design if this isn't passed. So, next slide. And then, I guess the other unknown in this is that the guidelines talk about other discretionary funding decisions. And the next slide, we talk about some of those grants that we get from the state, like for the PFAS program. And then next, transportation projects. I've been told by the representative from the MPO, which programs transportation projects funding for our region. He said that they, compliance with this is going to affect scoring. And this program is how we funded the construction of Lowell and Woburn Street that's happening now. So that's through the MVP, MVP, MPO programming funding. And that construction money came to us from the state and federal government. So we, we'd like to do that with Lowell and West Street as well. Get that to a point where we could get construction funding from the state and, and the federal government. But this outcome could impact the likelihood of getting that funding. And then Governor Haley has said, schools, roads, bridges. There's been a recent economic development bill that all the funding in there is sort of dependent on whether this is, whether you're compliant with the requirement, including historic preservation funding and library grants. So I guess the, the point of all this is that it's not just that original list. It, it has been expanding to other programs. Okay. And then lastly, go ahead, John. So to kind of summarize, this district is, is largely comprised of existing multifamily. And that was on purpose. We did that purposefully. And there is really limited opportunity to, to develop additional multifamily units in the district, especially in the short term. And then next. And then with a compliant district, all the worries about grant funding kind of go away. We retain our eligibility for those, for those funds. And with that, I am happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kingedge, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Before I speak, Mr. Moderator, I sent an email to you at your moderator website, moderator email in a town clerk's website. I was just wondering if the town clerk could bring that up so that when I go to speak, it can be put on the screen. But I rise to request that you put up on the screen now the Main Street District that's going to be in the zoning.
Mr. O'Neill, if you could scroll back a little bit to the Main Street zoning sub-district.
Thank you. I'd like, before I speak, I'd like to make a point of order. And my point of order is that this article is out of order and it's illegal. And I want to explain why. The property that you see there, that was along Main Street, that is now a parking lot, that property was taken by eminent domain. When a property is taken by eminent domain, it's taken for a specific purpose. And you cannot change that purpose. This is changing that purpose into something other than a parking lot. So that's why I feel as though this is out of order and illegal. And so I believe that the state legislature could actually convene and actually amend this MBTA zoning. And they could actually amend it to call, to allow for like 20-story building. And I don't think we want that. So, Mr. Moderator, if the town clerk would be kind enough to put up my email attachment up on the screen. I'd just like to make a motion that...
Mr. McDonald, I, I did not receive an email from, from you. The last I checked, my email was 5:45 this morning.
Okay, can the, can the town clerk bring it up on her email?
We, we're not going to, we're not going to have a, a really go down the rabbit hole.
I got it in writing. I get, I'd like to make a motion that we amend this article.
Mr. McDonald, why don't you read your motion? I understand we're going to have to put it in writing, but for the benefit of the assembly, you can use the microphone right in front of you if you'd like.
For the benefit of the assembly, that's why I wanted it on screen, but I'll read it anyway. Amendment to Article 1, December 7, 2024, Town of Wilmington Special Town Meeting. I move for an amendment to Article 1 to see if the voters will vote to petition the Massachusetts State Legislature for a home rule petition to request a special legislative act to grant the Town of Wilmington an exception from Section 3A of the Zoning Act, Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A, also referred to as the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District. The exemption is to allow the Town of Wilmington to choose its town-owned property or properties for the purpose of providing an overlay zone or overlay zones for affordable senior housing. The exemption requested would be conditional to the town providing an overlay zone or overlay zones for 1,248 affordable senior housing units or a combination of affordable senior housing units plus the total amount of bedrooms of existing Wilmington homes owned by seniors that agreed to sell the homes and who agreed to become occupants in one of the Town of Wilmington's affordable senior housing units. The combination of units and affordable senior housing must total 1,248 units. An affordable senior housing unit shall be counted as one unit, regardless of the number of bedrooms. And an existing residential property to be marketed and sold shall not count for more than three bedrooms, regardless of the number of bedrooms when calculating the total amount of units to meet the 1,248 units. The affordable senior housing zone or zones shall not include any existing affordable senior housing units at the time of this special legislative act in determining the required number of units for compliance. There shall be an age restriction of 62 years of age or an age that is in compliance with state and federal law in determinate, in determining the recognized age of a senior citizen. If the Town of Wilmington's affordable housing... Excuse me. If the Town of Wilmington's affordable housing stock units... housing stock units fall below 10%, then 20% of these units shall not be age restricted. This zone or zones shall not be overlaid upon land designated as Water Department land nor property in a groundwater protection district. And, Mr. Moderator, just so people would know, this would have to have a second to the motion for it to go for discussion.
Before we go to that, Mr. McDonald, whenever there is a motion to amend, the moderator has to make a determination that the amendment would be within the scope of the article. Just so folks understand the paradigm and the guideposts through which I have to conduct that analysis, I'll briefly read a little bit of case law to you. The purpose of the warrant is to apprise voters of the subject matter to be considered at the meeting. All that is necessary is for the article to include a sufficient description of the subject matter to provide the voters with substantial and intelligent notice of the nature of the business to be acted upon. Further, articles should be interpreted in a liberal manner and not with strictness or rigidity. They are limited, however, to the scope that may be given in article. Mr. McDonald, your, I had seen that was posted online yesterday, midday. Most of the motion that you read today did continue for a little bit beyond that, so there was some material that I have not been able to review through that analysis. But Article One seeks to introduce a new subsection to the zoning bylaws. The proposed amendment is seeking to replace that with the authorization for special legislation that would exempt the town from certain requirements, Mass. General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 3A. This is a wholly different concept and does not relate to amending the zoning bylaws. Further, the amendment introduces the concept of affordable senior housing as a central issue, whereas affordable senior housing is nowhere mentioned within the text of Article One. As such, despite the liberal interpretation to be given warrant articles, after a review of the relevant case law and discussion with council prior to today's meeting, I do have no choice and am duty-bound to rule that residents have not been provided with substantial and intelligent notice that any matters regarding affordable senior housing or authorizing special legislation will be decided upon today. And as such, the motion to amend is out of order.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I happen to disagree with that because I think the scope of the article has to do with providing housing. If you, you also mentioned that you didn't read further, the updated version, which provides for-
Mr. McDonald, it just went further down the same rabbit hole.
Okay, no problem. But, you know, I heard people applauding that. But I don't, I don't think that there's any reason to applaud the fact that senior housing hasn't been built in decades. If you go to Deming Way, it's really a very sad situation and disgraceful.
Mr. McDonald, be that as it may, I'm limited to discussion on-
Okay, well, this, this article before us is problematic. And if the legislature was to amend a law that allowed eminent domain takings to be used for some other use, that opens up an enormous can of worms. Picture your property being taken by eminent domain and somebody says, we want to put a tree farm there. And then a year later, they decided to put 500 units of luxury housing and you got a pittance of that value. That would be an enormous unfairness to you. So there's no way that they're going to convene and create an amendment that allows for a change in the eminent domain to allow for additional uses. This article is clearly unlawful and out of order, Mr. Moderator. I'm actually surprised that you're calling my article out of order and you failed to recognize the eminent domain problems with this article. That's about all I have to say, and I hope you vote against this because I'm going to come back for a special town meeting for senior housing. And I would strongly suggest you vote against this article because what it is, it's extortion. It's trying to put you over a barrel to try to deny funding. We live in the greatest country in the world where our Constitution provides for laws that are of the people, by the people, and for the people. And there are forces out there that are trying to destroy this every single day. One of the, one of the founders of the Constitution was asked, is this a republic or is it a monarchy? And he says, it's a republic if you can keep it. So we have to understand that we are a representative form of government, but unfortunately, some folks in government don't recognize that they represent the will of the people. And so, folks, don't let yourselves be extorted and threatened and cheated by the state on this. There's a such thing as taxation with representation, all right? Taxation without representation is illegal. And can you just imagine the horror show if they, they stopped funding Deming Way? It would be on every single news channel and every single paper. And there would be an outrageous uproar at those very vulnerable people. It's not going to happen. Don't be extorted, folks, and vote against this.
We're going to go to the gentleman in the red and then to Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's the first time I've been to-
Could you just state your name and address for the record?
I will, yes, certainly. Colora Williams, 63 Glen Road.
All right, I'm going to ask that you step a little bit closer to the microphone so-
Okay, oh, there you go. That's better.
Much better, thank you.
Yes, sir. I respectfully disagree with the gentleman here that spoke earlier, why he's for it, and, and the woman and her explanation on everything about this project. I've been in this town for 20 years now. My wife's family has owned our property there since 61, okay? It's been a lot of changes over these years. My taxes have doubled like this other lady in the last 20 years. We used to have the best tax rate going. There is such a thing as overdevelopment, and it's been going on here for a long time. I'd like to ask these people to reconsider that for this project, okay? It impacts more than just the area being built in, like she said. It impacts everybody in this town. I can't even get off my street in the morning. Takes me 10 minutes to get through the light onto 62. And I'm just over the railroad tracks because it's backed up to Drury Lane, which is the only crosswalk on the street where a car was on its roof there one afternoon, at 2:30 in the afternoon. Police pull over people occasionally on the road, okay? With all the influx of traffic that you're going to change, you're changing the whole impact of the town. This isn't a downtown, this is Main Street. Everybody, everybody, we have four exits that dump off 93 into our town, as it is right now. If there's an accident, the traffic's backed all the way up Glen Road. I can't even take a left. I got to go to work another way. Now you want to build all these projects, it's thrust upon us by the legislature and the governor, okay, to build next to the trains. I was against this 40B. You know, if you put that back on the screen where the woman showed, I would appreciate it if it's not complied with. It shows it. She had it up there, the causes. If you could do that for the Assembly, I'd appreciate it.
Which slide are you referring to? I'm not sure I follow.
She had, she had up there on the screen, the impact if the, if it's not complied with the projects.
You're talking about the, the grant money?
Yes. You know, grant money is just a matter of spending more money, you know? Already in this town, everybody's electric bill's gone up, the substation isn't big enough. We have our water supply, okay? We get our water from wells. Now you're driving water from the MWRA for all these 40B projects. You're going to be driving more water from the MWRA to pay for all this, for these people to have water. And what about the electricity? How are we going to afford all this? I don't see any young people here. There's a lot of young families that have moved in. I've seen them out on trick or treat. They weren't-
I take offense, I take offense to that, sir.
I'm talking younger than these people. They have little babies. Yeah. You know, the school system, you're going to need two more new schools that, Wildwood Street School's sitting there empty. And what's going to happen with the town hall property on Glen Road? You got this massive building-
Sir, I'm going to ask that you just try to constrain your comments to-
You're exactly right, sir. But what I'm trying to make the point is, it's an impact on the whole town and everybody. There's only a sidewalk on one side of most streets. It's just going to be a disaster. I'm sure that other people have a lot to say, but I would, I'm going to implore that you people reconsider. This is being thrust upon us and, and thank you for your time.
Folks, I do have a batting order that's going, so we're going to go to Mr. West. We're going to go to the individual in the black jacket. I'm not sure if the teller back there wishes to speak. Bronwyn, right, you're going to, you're up after the gentleman in front of you and then Mr. Misselli. So, Mr. West.
Frank West Jr. to Burchard Road. First, I want to embarrass a select board member and say, happy birthday. I won't, I won't say which one, but, but I will say is that, you know, with this project and everything, I'm against it. You know, I'm a young person in Wilmington, I'm 26 years old. You know, this whole thing is supposed to also help young families come into town. I can't afford it. I'll tell you right now, I couldn't afford any of these units that are being brought up. And the other thing I want to bring up is, from what I've heard from the last town meeting and this one, the state's trying to bully us to get what they want. Are we going to let a bully win? And that's all I got to say.
All right, thank you, Mr. West. To the gentleman in the back in the black.
Thank you, Mr. Moderators. So my name is Charlie Dagley, 12 Jakes here in town. So I rise in support of this article. Before I get into sort of just a quick comment, I'd like to thank both Valerie and her team as well as Mr. Bolin. I think the plan that they put together, presented to us last spring, and again, this time around with interesting updates and sort of clarifications of how it's presented, I think we all owe them a round of applause or at least our appreciation. So I agree with Mr. Bolin. I think his summary of this being lemonade out of lemons is right on. And I too am not super chuffed about the Commonwealth pushing this upon communities sort of in a one-size-fits-all framework. I too am concerned about what sort of unintended impacts this might have on the, what the town looks like, traffic, so on, everything else. But I do think that the plan that Valerie and her team put together effectively neutralizes most of the potential impacts. So she, you saw in her presentation, especially with the potential possible developments on Main Street, that sucks up 177 at most. And that's not probable, that's not for sure, that's possible units. Out of, you know, 1,200 or so, that was like the, what the square footage would allow. So I say from that perspective, that is really mitigated. One thing I really worry about in this debate, so this came up in the spring as well as the summer, is I worry that we are, we are not anticipating the unintended consequences to our taxes as a result of rejecting this article. So I know that a lot of what Valerie put up for the infrastructure work, and Mr. Bolin mentioned this as well, this is multiple millions of dollars of infrastructure funding that we receive from the Commonwealth that does not come from our tax base. So, you know, if your roof is leaking, whether you pay for it or someone else helps you pay for it, you're not going to live in a house with a leaky roof. And so I would really encourage people to think about that. That's a burden whether the state pays for it or not, someone's paying for it. If the state's not going to help us, we're eventually going to pay for it. And we saw in the previous article, we had a big, long debate about whether we should appropriate an additional $500,000 for a parcel in which we're already burying people. So that's $500,000. We're talking millions of dollars. And so I would just encourage everyone to consider that. An additional impact on your taxes, again, at most, let's say, less than 200 units. But if EJ's Pizza decides to go multi-use and build six apartments on top of the pizza shop, it's a small amount of units, but it does disperse some of the tax burden on everyone else. So we're all concerned about property taxes. I just would like everyone maybe to consider if we say no to this today, that, you know, your taxes, it's possible, may increase because we have to do this infrastructure work. So appreciate your time.
All right, we're going to go to Ms. Jones, Mr. Misselli, Mr. Fazul, and Ms. Feeny.
Should I restate my name and everything or?
Yeah, why not?
Okay, so Bronwyn Jones, 126 Segrove Ave. I would like to ask Ms. Valerie if that's okay. Is that all right?
Yeah, just pose your question to me and-
I would like to ask, if we were to lose the grant money, would the money needed for these projects such as getting rid of PFAS, which, may I remind some people, PFAS is an incredibly cancer-causing chemical that is in a lot of water, and it's very important to get rid of it. And I was just wondering, like, would projects like that, if they are not funded by grant money, would they come out of our taxes instead?
Ms. Kinggidge, if you know it, or Mr. Segal.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the body. That's a very good question. It would all depend on the, on the project. Things like critical infrastructure, collapsing culverts, you know, bridges, things like that, that we, we don't have any choice but to fix, would likely have to go through the capital plan process to be, to be funded by the town on their own. Some of these other grants are more discretionary and, and the town would have to make a, make a judgment call as to whether or not we wanted to fund the, the project that was subject to that particular grant, or there was something we would just not do if we couldn't get grant funding. But, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Misselli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Misselli, 25 North Street, through you to the body. I see we have a lot of speakers, so I'll try to keep this brief. And I've also been working hours and hours on end with my own personal time to make sure this does not pass. So to those that have helped me, thank you. But two points I do want to make. First point being is, we have seniors here, we have young people like me in here. And just to the seniors, just before you vote, think about how hard you've worked to make this town what it is today. All the tax money you've paid, all the time you've put in to make this town the great town it is. Do you want to sit here and let the state tell you or tell us how we zone? Did you really put in all those years here in Wilmington to make it such a great place? And then, here we go, state's going to tell us where to zone. And if you think this is a one-time thing, you are fooled. The state, no matter what happens, yes or no, they will come back and they will do this again. I guarantee it. And I do want to say to the no voters as well, just because we say no today, doesn't mean we're opposed to building. I'm in favor of building, but this is not the way to do it. A blanket mandate by the state legislature, which I'll tell you in a second how this all came up, a blanket mandate does not work for 177 communities. It does not. We can work with the state. We can. But this is not the right plan. I just want to make that clear. And one more thing, too. Some people know, some people don't. This was put in a $620 million economic spending bill back in 2020 at the 11th hour. This was not thought out by the legislature. It was, but not as well as it is. And this is not to the planning department or anything, but we can't put exact numbers on units and we have to, we have to rely on a spreadsheet. I don't want to rely on a spreadsheet to maybe give us a number of how much units we might get. So this was not well thought out, and I just want to make that clear. We can work with the state, but by saying no, you're not saying no forever. But something to think about, too. And the way this is being done through extortion, how do you even accept that? Like, we cannot just accept and just allow the state to do this because they will come back and they will do this again and again and again. So if you say yes today, you're saying yes forever. So vote no and end this nightmare, please.
We're going to go to Mr. Fazul.
Rob Fazul, 19, sorry, 28 Marjory Road, Wilmington. Lifelong resident here. I grew up when this was all trees. I don't want to see this. I'm against it. But I do want to say Valerie did the best that she could do. So I want to say thank you once again to Valerie. Just drive down Main Street, 177 units with pedestrians. You can't get down Main Street today. And we're going to, we're talking about 177 units. We've got Westford, who was told this is, if it happens, 100, 500- We've got Westford, who was told this is, if it happens, 100, uh, 536 units were just announced, weeks after accepting. We've got Lexington, just announced last week, 1,000 units. They were told, if it happens. It's not if this is gonna happen, it's when it's gonna happen. When you drive down Main Street, look at McGovern, and I'm not calling them out, but does anybody think that the owner of that building will not sell when that property value goes up? Does anybody see, uh, Sunrise Plaza? Not a lot of money has been put into that plaza, not banging them, but if a developer comes in and says, hey, I could put a big development when this comes through, they're gonna sell. It's not if, it's when. Don't let the state bully us. They can go pound sand. With that, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Alright, we're gonna go to Ms. Feeny and then to the gentleman in the navy, Cordezil.
Hi, Michelle Feeny, 5 Arlene Ave. I agree with the extortionary tactics comments. I think I'd like to read a list of the other cities and towns who were not bullied and said no and rejected the 3A plan. Drakeet, Duxbury, East Bridgewater, Freetown, Hanson, Marblehead, Marshfield, Middleborough, Middleton, Milbury, Milton, thank you, Milton for being the first, North Reading, Norwell, Rowley, Seekonk, Tuxbury, Weston, Wilmington, hopefully, and Winthrop. These other towns have been postponed to after the deadline, so we're hoping that these are a no. Ashland, Billrica, Georgetown, Hamilton, Hanover, Holden, Ipswich, Norton, and Wenham. And then these three towns pushed it and petitioned to a referendum to a townwide vote, Needham, Shrewsbury, and Gloucester. So I agree with, I, it amazes me that the state can come in, withhold our money, the grant money, its tax money that we paid into. Don't let them bully us, don't give up, as everyone else said, they're extorting this money. To actually withhold grant money unless we do what they want and hand over land is just to speak for itself. Thank you.
Alright, I am trying to, uh, keep track of, of those who I see first at the microphone, so I'm gonna go to the gentleman in the navy blue, Cordezil, and then the, uh, individual in the, uh, the blue and black flannel shirt. So, same side, uh, you and then you.
Warren Stevenson, 280 Woburn Streets. Um, I stand here in support of Article 1. We need to increase the housing supply here in eastern Massachusetts to maintain a stable future. Massachusetts has seen the age 25 to 44 age group be the largest age group to move out of Massachusetts with housing costs as the number one reason. In 2022, 22,631 people aged 25 to 44 moved out of Massachusetts. This is an economic detriment to our state. The age 25 to 44 age group is our prime work age group as seniors retire and lower-income migrants move in. We need the younger workers to be staying to pay taxes to help with the services that our seniors deserve, that our schools need, that our infrastructure needs. To keep people in Massachusetts, we need to increase the housing supply. On a personal note, I am the father of an eight-year-old boy. I hope that someday, if he wants to stay in this area, that he can actually afford to live here. And I bet many in this room would love for their children or grandchildren to be able to live in this area as well. Increasing the housing supply in a controlled manner as Article 1 proposes helps makes this more possible. So please support Article 1 and the rest I didn't have written, but as I, as I stood here and listened to people saying, oh, we are a republic of the people, for the people, by the people, and others saying, don't let the state bully us. This legislation was created to address a genuine problem of housing. It was passed by a Republican governor, Charlie Baker, and a Democratic legislature. And the purpose of it was to try to get to a solution that is difficult to solve. 111 towns, both urban and suburban, have already passed this. And I, what I would ask is, let us be part of our general community here in eastern Massachusetts to allow our children to someday be able to stay here next to their parents and grandparents, to let the current generation who find jobs in this area to stay here. That, as difficult as it may be, we need to give it a chance to people to remain here in an affordable way, and the more housing supply can lower the cost. And that is what this ultimate goal is, without talking about bullying or extortion. Ultimately, what the legislature did is gave the power to towns to decide where that zoning was. They're putting it in the hands of the people, and that is what you were being asked to do. So I just ask for my son and for many of the other children in this town to help them stay here and help increase the, the chance to live here in Massachusetts.
My name is Christopher Vietoro, 32 Faulkner Ave. I love this. I love that we finally spoke about the opportunity of this. We can all talk and debate about how this was done, and there's some qualms to talk about it, but this is an amazing opportunity that we have for our town. I mean, I just moved to Wilmington not too long ago, and there's a lot to love, but it's not perfect. There's no place for me to take my three-year-old son and hang out outside of a park that are kind of far from the stuff I wanna hang out, where to get a coffee, grab an ice cream, you know, share a beer with, with a friend. So, I love that at least we're seeing a strategy for the town instead of continuing to grow kind of haphazardly and without a real general direction. So what I see here is an opportunity to kind of claim. You know, people talk about the town center. I mean, I love Market Basket as much, as much as the next guy, but it's not a place where we hang out with my two-year-old, you know? And, you know, we can talk about the Hyundai, but, you know, I, I love a Hyundai as much as the next guy, but it's not the historical town Hyundai, you know? We can build something there that could be phenomenal and amazing for the rest of the town. If we look at the opportunity for new businesses and new growth, I don't think this is the perfect way to do it, but damn it, at least it's a, it's a way forward that I have not seen anywhere else. So, I'm voting yes, and I hope others do too.
We're gonna go to Mr. McCoy, Mr. DePalma, and Ms. Stewart.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm not gonna turn my, mean to turn my back on the folks up here, but I just wanna turn it sideways so I could speak to both. Uh, I understand where folks are coming from, and at the most recent town meeting, I rise in opposition to the article as much as I did to the first one, but I wanna say something. I've lived in this community all my life. Our parents wanted us, my siblings and us to live here in a town in Wilmington, we want that for our kids. I did support the planning board and the members and the director when it came to Cross Street and the zoning on Lowell Street because of affordability. When they talk about affordability, we're talking about what, $2,500 a month for one bedroom and under $3,000? That's take-home pay, folks. You gotta make substantially a lot more money than that to actually make it affordable. So it's very difficult, and I believe there's not an affordable component in this article as it was given from the state, and I know we can try to make changes. And I wanna say, I served this community for 33 years. I served on that board for 30 years on the Board of Selectment, and I served three years on the Planning Board. And I'll tell you this, we talked about Governor Baker. Governor Baker sent Secretary Ash of Housing to the Board of Selectment to pitch this to the town. I got up at that meeting when I served on the board, and I said, you know, Mr. Secretary, there's a big difference between country life and city life. When people move to the city, they live in the city, they're used to the clustered development, high-rises, no more parking, you know, you have to share parking spots, fight with your neighbors to get a spot in the summer, in the winter, excuse me. But out here, it's a little bit different. People move to the town to try to have a small-town feel, and I get that. I said to the secretary, you should really have a couple of components for city life and country life, but they didn't chose to do it. They've chosen to do one thing. And I know folks are saying, well, you know, we shouldn't take it on the chin from the state, but you know, as I hear earlier, more and more towns in our, you know, surround the community, Tuxbury and all the towns that this young lady spoke of, have decided to vote in opposition to what's going on. So, I tend to think that's, you know, the way to go. And I bring that up because obviously, you know, this is something, I understand some folks wanna keep this, you know, and vote for it, and, you know, there's folks that don't wanna vote for it, but the way I see it is this, folks, and everyone says we shouldn't take it on the chin, but if you really think about this, the bottom line is some folks are saying, well, you know, folks, it's progress. We need progress. You know what I say? This is a invasion in our community. Vote it down.
Mr. DePalma and then Ms. Stewart.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I went back and forth on this project constantly. First off, I wanna say one, one thing very important, that Valerie Kindredz and her staff did an incredible job.
They did.
She was ordered to do something and they did it. Whether you like the project or not is up for debate, but she did it with compassion, and, uh, let's never blame her or her staff for this. As, as far as, as far as the state mandating us, it's not fair. And I use that term a lot. It's just not fair. Why didn't they come to the town and say to the town, we have an issue and we wanna discuss it with you? Can we do this? Can we do that? No. It was, we jammed this down your throat, whether you like it or not, we're gonna get something out of you. It's not, it's just not fair. It's not fair that they, they're considering penalizing us. It's not fair that the governor could have, even though it was signed into law, overridden it, or put a freeze on it and get these people out here, these engineers and all the designers of these projects, to the communities and say to the communities, what can we do? What will you Wilmington allow us to help you do? We'll offer you infrastructure, we'll offer you this, we'll offer you... No, they didn't offer anything. They just take away. When I was a kid and I would do something wrong, my father would wrap me in the side of the head and take something away from me. Why? Because I was being punished. Why? Because I did something wrong. What has the town done wrong to be punished by taking finances away? You're not taking, I'm 72 years old, you're not taking anything away from me because I don't get much anyways. But what about the kids? And what about the young people that do wanna move into the commu, community? My grandson got out of the Marines, he couldn't move back to Wilmington. Why? Couldn't afford it. But he understood, and he wasn't too upset. He understood that he couldn't afford the town he lived in. I am just shocked that the state will come out and demand, demand from us to take our land. Who in the name of God do they think they are? Now, I strongly recommend that we say no to this, but I also strongly recommend that we tell our illustrious state rep is here, uh, oh gee, I don't see the state senator. Tell them, have the state come back to us and sit down and talk like adults on what they have, what they would like to do, and let us present them with something. Thank you.
Um, so, Mr. Robinson, just to the point of personal privilege you mentioned.
Thank you. And I'll keep this and then I'll try to keep my next remarks short, uh, on what I've done on behalf as a professional representing what you did, but to address the remarks on the board, we did. Lieutenant Governor Polito came out. I was at that meeting first as an aide, later on as an elected official thanks to you kind folks of the public, and had voted on $6.5 billion. And if you were present at the last town meeting, that was around the 2018, 2019 period, from 2017 to 2021, this town produced 177 units of housing, less than one graduate's worth, one year's worth of graduation. So those kids could not stay here. I'm an evader apparently from Tuxbury, and pardon me for being a little frustrated, but I like to think I worked hard on behalf of these two towns. I dropped four grand out of my own pocket just meeting inflation so I can entertain the prospect of purchasing a house here. Doesn't go towards paying a school, doesn't go towards paying a road, I have to take that money and park it just to match inflation for the 20% down payment. And not for nothing, I'm gonna be very proud on your behalf to go forward and fight for a brand-new elementary school. So, pardon me for being a little frustrated when folks talk about us having to move further away and extend our commute, when us young folks, we're just trying to work here. We were born here, we wanna stay with you. Our folks, our family, we love and care for you, our neighbors. So, I just wanted to, to jump out and say that we have had tried that. I will give this, Wilmington is making unbelievable credit over the last few, uh, about year, year and a half in up, upping that. COVID certainly threw a loop into it, but we, the state, did come by. And then as for it being last minute and such, I'll go into that later, but I keep hearing this is unprecedented, it's bullying. I'm gonna tell you this, if you voted in any of the last four elections, regardless whoever president was, they use the same exact legal action that we are too, which is why when you hear me later talk about the much worse alternatives, because I'm not the biggest fan of this. I did vote for this, you guys know that, I admitted it last time. I'll tell you what the shortcomings are in the fight that we've had addressing those. But this was passed back in the 1960s, which eventually became 40B, that precedent. We've done it for churches, we've done it for power plants, we've done it for disposal stations. The same exact process which the state is using today is not dissimilar to what we're using to defend for the waste transfer station. So I just wanna put that in perspective. You can disagree with it, that's fine, but the legality of something is ultimately one of the reasons I felt, as much as I dislike certain components of this, I do believe the state and the federal government do have legal precedent that's been set and upheld over decades. And that is a big what-if today, I think a lot of folks are kinda confusing here. So, I'm gonna jump back out, I'll let the other folks in and address any questions that are there, Mr. Moderator. So, thank you for allowing me that personal privilege.
Alright, again, I've been keeping a batting order, the folks that, that have been getting in line. We're gonna go to Ms. Stewart in the back, and then we're going to go actually to the first five people in the back, right, white microphone, that are making eyes at me like they want something, want blood. So, Ms. Stewart.
I am Susan Stewart, 169 Shawshank Avenue. I'm getting very concerned with the rhetoric here. It's an invasion. We are being bullied. This is extortion. No, it's not. It's politics. The, the state is saying to us, we need you to comply with this, and if you do, we will give you free money. If you do not, if you do not, it's, you're right, you're right. It is, it is tax money, but they could use that tax money in many, many different ways. And we want our share, and we have a lot of things we can spend it on. Uh, I'm sure you all have things. I think the planning board did a fabulous job of finding places, no, specifically, finding places where it wouldn't hurt us to do this moderation. And that the planning board did a great job of saying also, this isn't gonna happen tomorrow. Everybody's worried about how much sewage it's gonna take and how much extra teachers are gonna be needed in the schools and all of that. Guys, that's happening anyway. Rachel's Village is happening, all these other places are already being built completely outside of this. So, you know, you talk about the, the town is changing, we don't want the state to change the town, the town is changing anyway. We're trying to get more people to be able to live here because there are people who grow up here and wanna live here. So, our choice really is, the town changes, or we take some control of the process and decide a bit about where the town will change, and that the state gives us money. Thank you.
Note at the back, right?
Hi, Emma Pataglia, 37 Grace Drive. Um, I want to, uh, also express my disappointment at some of the fear-mongering that we've heard today. As Valerie clearly described, we're talking about max 200 units. For us to say, let's give up millions and millions of dollars a year for potentially 200 units in the closest possible area we could put to the train station, like, you can disagree with the way this law came about, you can, you know, feel like it's heavy-handed. I personally disagree. The state is the one that already gives us money and funds all our things, they're the ones who make those decisions, they're the ones who also regulate zoning. Our ability to regulate it at the local level is given to us by the state, and the state can take it away. And what our rep was, will probably tell us is that the state could take a lot more drastic action... is that the state could take a lot more drastic action than they are taking now. They are giving our local community the ability to make this choice and to think about what makes the most sense for Wilmington. We are hearing so much today about the fact that people can't afford to live in Wilmington. Well, supply and demand tells us that when we don't have enough housing, what does exist is going to get more expensive because there's more competition for it. The only way that we could bring down prices is by building more. And I understand that when we see new units are being priced at a couple thousand dollars each, that seems crazy. And I couldn't agree more. But you have to understand that we're looking at a whole collective of number of units. So even if you have those expensive units, there are people who can afford that and they're going to move into those. And then that might allow them to move out of someplace that's slightly more affordable. So then someone can move in there. And the whole cycle goes on. And that is a, like a healthy housing ecosystem. And that's what we don't have right now. And that's why young people have to leave the state while seniors can't afford to downsize. And so, you know, I just really feel like we are only hurting ourselves if we deny this. We can say, "Oh, let's stick it to the state." The state doesn't care if we deny it. The state is more than happy to give this tax money to Reading or Woburn, to literally any other community. So we could just say goodbye to it and cut our losses. Or we could think of this as an opportunity for potentially some really nice housing that might have some commercial businesses on the first floor, close to our train station, in a place where you actually can walk. We have sidewalks. We have the infrastructure there. We have sewers. So, you know, I just really encourage you to think about the people who, you know, want to be able to stay in Wilmington, the people who want to be able to call it home to be able to continue to do that.
Ms. Bowden.
Hi, I'm Barb Bowden at 1 Leonard Lane. And I just wanted to say it's really hard to be told what to do. And I think especially for this town, who has an engaged citizenship, many committees, used to making its own decisions. And so I want to talk about two things today. Resistance and what type of resistance we want to do. And I also want to talk about impact. So on the, on an, well, maybe I'll start with, with resistance. Right? We can stay, stand up here and say, "No, you can't do it to us." Right? But what I'm seeing in the planning board's design is quieter resistance. It's looking at different parcels and it's saying, "We can actually cheat the system in Wilmington." Our goal here today is not to figure out how to run the state or how other communities should vote or who has done what. Our goal is to figure out what is best for this town today, right? With our zoning plans and also in the future. So as we think about our taxes and the load that our town wants to carry, if we don't have as much state funding, and that's our choice, right? So what I saw in this plan is looking at areas that already have building. So it counts, but it won't actually be further development. They're looking at places that have wetlands or no access to sewer, which means, yes, technically it counts in the plan. So we're following the rules by the state. But we're not necessarily going to have the development. Are there areas that could have development? Yes. What I heard is that we're talking about potential right now, right? Longer term, you know, could be more. But right now, what she said was, "There's a possible 200, and it probably won't be right away because there's some other plans happening in those spaces." So I just want to calibrate the difference between how much development and how much impact we're actually, Wilmington. Forget the other towns. What is the right decision for Wilmington? And is 200 units in the possible span of the next few years worth us really putting a stamp and defying loudly and proudly that we don't believe in the state? Or do we do this passive resistance where we actually go around and we create a plan that totally works for us and doesn't have the impacts that we're so concerned about? The other impact I want to talk about is state funding. Now, they've clearly outlined a plan about some of the things that will be, will happen immediately. But this town also has large grants that are in place for MSBA funding for our schools. In fact, one that we are voting for probably next fall. That probably is about $40 to $50 million that the state will support a new school building if it's voted at town hall here. I mean, sorry, in town, town vote. And, you know, will they pull it? I don't know if they will state that they will pull it. But we know how politics works, folks. Right? Wilmington will not be in favor. So if that project does go through, if we vote this down, that's not guaranteed. If it's not, if it goes through, we are actually looking at putting in another application after that. Right? For, for another school. So I just want to make sure we're sort of looking at this thing. I understand the macro and it feels really bad. But when we look at the details, 200 units, and we're talking about tens of million dollars on the other side of it, which will affect our taxes. If we want to hold that tax burden ourselves, we can do that. But we have to be intentional at this meeting and understand that as a consequence. Tens of millions of dollars that the town will have to bear if we decide to stick it to the state. It might be worth it. But I just want to be sure that we're like, there's ways of actually working within, within the guidelines that actually I don't believe impact our town too much. Thank you.
Just to briefly recap our batting order, I've been keeping track of folks as they rise to the microphone. We still have the next three individuals in a row at that back microphone. Then we have Ms. Kozlik and then we have the individual in the red scarf.
Thank you, sir. No insult to your process, but the woman in the front there was standing up long before me.
She, I think Ms. Shukis, I did get her, actually two after that. She, she did let me know that she is still in line, but she's, she's just sitting down. So I appreciate it.
No, no problem. Hi, my name's Patty George. I live at 25 Columbia Street. I do want to thank the planning board for a very thoughtful presentation. I'm certainly struggling myself with the trade offs and I appreciate the comments from my fellow residents on the pros and cons and how to start to think about this and maybe put it into a bigger picture. I think my questions were more around in all the analysis that we've seen. I don't feel like I have a good understanding for what the additional burden will be to the town should we move forward. And what I'm thinking about in terms of burdens are more along the lines of infrastructure required to support an expansion. While I recognize that affordable housing should be a priority for us, I'm kind of surprised we haven't addressed that ourselves without someone else coming to tell us to do it. And I'm very sympathetic to our seniors in the audience who I don't think have adequate housing here. And I'm concerned about what the plan might look like for Deming Way and further deprecating what few homes we have available for those seniors. I don't feel like we've really been presented with what the other side or the cons of implementing this might be to the infrastructure that's currently in place. And with full respect to the grants for those in the audience, we pay for those grants in our state taxes. I appreciate the point that we're fighting to grab some back and be the beneficiary of it. But a lot of what's deteriorating is due to the increased volume of residents in the town. And I'm not quite understanding why when we develop things, there's not some parallel fees that go along for supplementing those infrastructure burdens. Thank you.
Mr. Turner.
Stephen Turner, 59 Washington Avenue. A few different points. The first thing I'd like to remind is that the finance committee is in favor of this. And I take their views on our finances and our tax burden very seriously. I do also want to thank Ms. Gingrich and her team. They've done a great job trying to present something balanced that will meet the requirements in a way that's relatively moderate. But one, a couple of different points. One, we can shake our fist all we want at the state. But literally that has a dollar price tag attached to that today. If we choose to shake our fist, we're going to pay for it. And that's sad and you can be frustrated and angry and I get that. But it's going to cost you. So think about how hard you want to shake that fist and how much you want to yell and scream and stomp your feet. One important thing about traffic in, in this town, Wilmington does not exist in a vacuum. We can say no to this and our traffic will go up because every time there's an accident on 93, Google sends hundreds of cars down west in Woburn onto our streets. We can't change that by saying no to this. That doesn't go away. Every new development in Tewksbury, Andover, North Reading, Reading, Woburn, Burlington impacts Wilmington. So saying no to this is a way to avoid traffic. Sorry, it's going to go up. That doesn't impact this at all. And then the last thing is, the state's had three years to change their mind. They haven't. This isn't going to go away. The consequences of saying no will only go up is we have received, to one of the prior comments, confirmation that the current MSBA program is not potentially impacted. So that is good news. But it doesn't mean future ones might not be. It doesn't mean the culverts. It doesn't mean that the other infrastructure we need wouldn't be. There is a cost. This is a relatively low impact way to address a problem to some of the prior points. To be honest, you're not going to build residence on top of a gas station because the gas station land is contaminated. There's never going to be housing at Speedway. So I can pretty well guarantee that. And so the number 177 or 189 is actually high. So it's, the impact is really low. The benefits are pretty clear. And again, I get frustration. I get being frustrated. Point of fact is, we vote for everyone in the state. We vote for everyone here. If we don't like it, we change our votes and we hope for things to change. But clearly the state is not moving away from this. So do we want to pay more taxes to fund frustration? I don't.
Scott, Scott O'Shea, 6th Algro Lane. I, I think, I think we need to, we, we need to have like more housing. I, I don't know how to do it and we need to work it out together. I, I hear a lot of people say that this isn't a good, this isn't the best way, but like there just isn't enough housing. Where am I, like, when I think about my friend, like, because I grew up here, right? Like, it's hard to live here. My friends live in like Southern New Hampshire and like towns that are so far away that when you get a jury duty request to go there, you go like, whoa, that's like really far away. I didn't even know that was in Middlesex County. And so I, I guess I'm going to support this because it just feels like if not, I, I need something. I kind of need this, guys. Like, I need, like, we need places to, like a place to stay in and a place to live in. There's just not enough. And I, I guess this is something. This is something for people who want it. I know that it, and, and at the same time, we do have to balance all these things that we're talking about, like that, that are issues. And also like if everyone votes against it, then that's important to, that's important. We're not going to do that way. But I just really think that it's important to have more housing somehow, some way. And, you know, we could plan and think about ways to do it really well so that there's not any traffic impacts and that everything can be more smooth and more easy. I think that this wouldn't, you know, I, I've also lived in like rural North Carolina and they have buildings that, it's mad country there. And they have buildings like what is being talked about. And I know that we don't live there. We live here. And I, I just think we kind of, I, I think that there's a huge need. I don't think a lot of people here could afford to live here, to buy a house here right now if you didn't already have a house here. And, and it's just, yeah, I don't know. And other people say two. Thanks.
Ms. Kozlik.
Hi, I'm Megan Kozlik, 10 Hanover Street. I don't like how the state has set this up.
Ms. Kozlik, could you just speak a little bit closer to the microphone?
I don't like how the state has set this up. It's natural for people to say that if people are threatening to punish us for not doing something, what we're being asked to do must be really bad. I also don't like how the state has set this up because we have spent this long this morning talking about how much we don't like the state. But what we're voting on today is not the state law. We're voting on what our town planning folks have spent a really long time tailoring to this particular community. You know, one of the objections to the state law is that it applies to all 177 communities and doesn't take into account the nuances of each particular town. But this particular zoning act that we're looking at does. And so what we're being asked to decide is not whether we like the state law. It's whether or not we like this particular zoning overlay district and whether it could be good or at least not bad for this town. We've been discussing a lot of possible problems because it's always easier to see what we might be scared about than seeing the opportunities on something. So folks have been talking about the number of possible units. I think Mrs. Gingrich has done a really good job in telling us that that high figure that we initially saw is not a realistic one. We're instead looking at 100, 150 units. And that will be over time. People have also criticized this as being unfunded. Of course, when units get built, that increases the value of the property that's been redeveloped. If they're apartments, the apartment owner will be paying higher taxes and passing that through as rent. If it's condos, there will be more units, more taxpayers that will be footing their share of any increases in town services. We've also talked about the impacts to town services. I'd like to suggest that they're not going to be that high. Right? The one that everyone always gets really scared about is the schools. I was surprised there's available information online that shows the enrollment in our school district at many different points in time. I've lived in town for a dozen years. So I look back in 2010 to 2011. We had 3,732 students in our school district. For the most recent year that's available, it's 2023 to 2024, that number had dropped by almost 1,000 students. We're down to 2,760. And that's despite the various multifamily buildings such as the Metro at Wilmington having come online in that time. The other thing is, we only ever have this conversation about burdens on the town when we're talking about multifamily housing. We never talk about it when we're talking about single family development. But there has been a lot of single family development in town, even over those past dozen years. I called town hall yesterday to try to get numbers associated with that. And it doesn't seem like we keep really good track. But I was talking with the planning staff and trying to think of the new neighborhoods that I'm aware of. On Chestnut Street, there are two new neighborhoods. There's, I think McDonald back in the corner. And then you can think about all the lots, like the one we talked about in the context of the cemetery, right? Where it's one house right now, but there's actually three developable lots there. I think a lot of people can think about where they live and they can think about how houses have gone back up behind other houses. So just counting houses I'm aware of. I'm aware of 100 new single family homes in that past dozen years. And the multifamily housing, you know, due to unit size and other things, it's not going to attract as many kids to those housing units as the single family houses. The people that we need to be concerned about for the schools are not people who are going to be living in there mostly. It's people like me, right? I moved in a dozen years ago and now I have three kids in the schools. So, but those things are already allowed, right? People can sell a larger lot to a developer. They can sell off a portion of their land that turns into another lot and those houses can go up. So we don't end up talking about it. But again, even with all that having gone on in the past dozen years, our school system is down 1,000 kids. So when people talk about needing two new schools to support 150 multifamily units, that's not going to come to pass, right? We might need new schools in this town because our schools are old, but it's not because of the number of kids. One other point, I think a lot of the people here who might be objecting to what the state is asking us to do might also be people who may be concerned about regulation in general. And I'd just like to point out that zoning is regulation. So, you know, if there was no regulation around it, we wouldn't have zoning. There would be no restrictions on what people can build where or what they can build. So what the state is actually asking us to do in this case is they're asking us to reduce the amount of regulation by allowing another use in this district. It's actually reducing regulation. So to conclude, I'd just like to suggest to people that they not cut off their nose to spite their face because of what they don't like the state having framed this as and to consider the merits of the actual thing that we're being asked to look at. Thank you.
Now, we have the individual in the red scarf and then the individual behind her. And then we have Ms. Shukis and then Ms. West.
Thank you. My name is Carolyn Fenn. I live at 37 Lawrence Street. I'm 67 years old. There is a woman admitting her age. I'm a senior. My husband and I are very blessed to live in Wilmington. We love this town. I think it's evidenced by looking around at everybody here today. He was so passionate about our town and our future. I couldn't be more proud to be standing here. I bring up my age and where we live because we are fortunate to live in a very small, modest ranch house that is about 80 years old now. And we plan to stay there. And that's great. But I have been to the senior center and I have heard other colleagues, peers of mine, talk about having also had the fortune to live in Wilmington, raise their kids here in their homes. And now they're of an age when they're sitting in their houses, three, four, five bedrooms, lots of maintenance, a lot of work, right? And wishing that they could downsize, but they can't. There's no place for them to go. And yes, you can say, well, but it's not affordable. It's really not just a matter of affordability. If I'm a senior and I sell my five-bedroom home that I raised my kids in here in Wilmington, I'm going to make some good money, right? The housing prices have been really good. So I'm going to have money to go move into one of those apartments where I don't have to worry about shoveling the snow and mowing the lawn and fixing every leak of that roof, right? So, so I just want to bring that perspective into the conversation. If we can create an environment where our seniors can stay in the town where they've devoted their whole lives to, then isn't that a good thing, right? And doesn't that also, to Mr. McDonald's point, create the opportunity for housing stock? Because we can only build so much. To be freed up for young families that want to move into the town and take advantage of our wonderful benefits and, and services here. So that's one quickie point I want to make. The other thing I just want to say very briefly is that we do need state money. This is a law. It was passed. And this plan does incorporate existing development. We live in a wonderful town. We have incredible access to transportation. I commute into Boston one day a week. I used to have to do it five. Boy, how great to get on the commuter rail. I feel so blessed. But I guess the bottom line that I want to say is, I, I hear the tone and I understand that people are angry with the state. But let's try not to make the decision based on that, as somebody else has alluded to. Let's really just try to look at the facts of this situation. And let me remind you, we're all part of the state. You know, we're not like a separate country out there coming in and saying what to do, right? We are state. We are state taxpayers. We live in the state of Massachusetts. We're part of that whole thing. So yeah, maybe we don't like the way this went down and it feels bullying and it feels incringing. I get all that stuff too. But I'm just asking the voters to please, don't make your decision because you're mad at the state. Make your decision based on the merits of this particular proposal and that will serve Wilmington so well. Going to the future, keeping us vibrant, keeping us strong, keeping us growing. It's a part of the world that life and everything changes. And I'm going to confess to you now, I grew up in Brookline, all right? Very privileged to grow up in Brookline. Could never have afforded to live there at this point. So I feel very blessed now that we're in this situation. But you know, towns go through these kinds of cycles. And it's not a bad thing. And again, I, I, I'm just so grateful to all of you for being here today and, and lending your energy to this discussion. Thank you.
Ms. Misselli, I, I appreciate that. I can kind of go through the batting order. We have the individual who's also been waiting in the back for, for quite some time. We have Ms. Shukis, Ms. West, Ms. Misselli, the individual in the hoodie in the back, and we've got five more people after that. So trying to, trying to do it on, I, I need some, to recognize someone who's kind of already in the order, so. Individual in the back.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Dixon. I'm from Washington Ave. I can see my house from here. To a point, I can see from my, my house from here. This is all within a walking distance for me. So, I mean, I've got a pretty strong opinion on it. And I'm also someone who has commuted into the city multiple days a week on that train. This isn't building housing, anything that's already in process or gets announced right after this is passed, is already approved. This is a zoning change. It's not an approval for a new big apartment building. It makes sense to me. I get that the state is strong-handing it. None of us love that. To a point though, what other solution do you have? We are a town 17 miles outside of Boston and we have two commuter rail stations. So to say that we're some rural area that's not affected by a commuter area is frankly ridiculous. We literally have two commuter rail stops on two different lines and are under 20 miles outside of the city. That is all to say, the population is growing. This town is also going to grow. So I'm going to consider that as someone who would also love to get to live here for, you know, decades. I assume my taxes will also increase, but I also know that in the years that I've lived here, so has my home value as I live 20 miles outside of Boston with two commuter rail stations. So just as a point, I would like to consider the future of the town. And as somebody who literally lives on that map, I'm going to vote for this and I hope you do too. I'd rather see our schools get the money. So the man who made the point about his eight-year-old child, I hope he gets to grow up and even consider living in his hometown. I am from one of the towns that shot this down. And just to say, I don't know if that's your aspiration. There's a reason I'm from there and not there.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, a question of order.
There is a question of order, Mr. McDonald.
I'm aware that you're an attorney and
Come on, Kevin.
Can you please explain to me why this is even going to a vote? When you know, when you know the eminent domain factor is an issue here.
Kevin, sit down.
Mr. McDonald, if there, if ultimately, if whenever a motion on an article is passed at town meeting is then reviewed by the Attorney General's office, if there is an illegality found in there, it's kind of so be it. It's, it's beyond our control at this point. So the moderator has absolutely no discretion to, on the floor, say that an article is illegal or out of order. I do not have an iron fist.
But you did that to me.
Mr. McDonald, the article puts residents on sufficient notice as to the business to be conducted. You did not submit an article. You submitted a motion to wholly redefine an article through a motion to amend. Your point of order has been addressed. I'm going to go to Ms. Shukis.
Thank you. I've been in this town 66 years and I never miss a town meeting. I know where this town has come from. I know where it's going. And this is not good for this town. This is not the only state that is going through this. This is federal. This is backed by federal. I will not be bullied. I never have been and I object to it. And I say, vote this down. It's for your own good. How can the state afford to sue every town that's voting them down? They don't have that kind of money. So let them sue.
So we have Mrs. West, Ms. Misselli, individual in the gray hoodie, Ms. Murphy.
Before I speak, can she speak before me? Because I do think she was ahead of me.
If, if
I do think she was ahead of me.
By all means, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. West, Mrs. West. I need my glasses. So I just want to bring up, this is not about being pissed at the state, sticking it to the state. This is about not liking what the state is imposing on us. So I, I don't appreciate those comments. It's your opinion. But that's not what this is about. Just because those of us that are not in favor of it, it's not to stick it to the state. It's because we don't agree with it, okay? So I would also like to mention that we have, as been mentioned, we've had a lot of development. And if you've been to or heard any selectman meetings, select board meetings, excuse me, we talk about the infrastructure from police, fire, with all the developments that's been happening over the years. And we are tight today. Never mind with what we have coming in. We still have the, the Princeton Development coming in. We still have the West Street coming in. We have the apartments at Cross Street coming in. Combined, those are over 400 units between them. I think it's actually closer to 450 units, okay? Now, this, this is not housing. This is apartments. There might be some townhouses there, okay? So adding another 400, for the sake of the argument, to Wilmington already on what's already just here, and there are vacancies in all those places. We are already getting strapped. We need a fire substation, which I know we've been talking about forever, okay? That's already, that was a need 10 years ago. It's a need today. It's going to be more of a need with these buildings that haven't even been built, never mind occupied, okay? Traffic is traffic. I agree with the statement, traffic is traffic. I live right off across the street, on North Street, where the Princeton property is. I was not for that for the reason that it's heck getting out of my street today. Never mind when we have another 108 units there, okay? But it's growth. I'm not afraid of growth. I love this town. I want it to grow. But it has to grow in the right way, okay? So I oppose this. And, and we also have to look at, we're, we're talking about apartments here. We're not talking about homes. And you know what? The prices are not going to go down. They're, they haven't gone down. None of these places have gone down. They keep going up. People are paying mortgage rates to rent a one-bedroom apartment. Okay? That's not going to change, in my opinion, okay? So that has to be, that has to be remembered. People keep saying, okay, we're going to lose grant money. That's our money that should be coming back to us. We, it should not be taken away from us because we don't want to comply with this. The other thing is, our taxes are going to go up no matter what. If this goes through, it's going to go up. If it, if it doesn't go through, it's going to grow up, go up because we need to pay for more police, more fire, a substation, you name it, okay? That's not going to change. Taxes are going to go up, yes or no, for different reasons. So as you can tell, I'm opposed to this. Again, Val has done a hell of a job, her and her team. We've said this, when this first came about three years ago, you know, we had sympathy for her and her team because this kind of stinks. You know, to be put in this position, it's obviously not personal. I agree with many of you that are for it that she has done, done the best job possible in what she's laid out. I don't argue that one bit. And then in closing, Val, I do have a question. If this does go through, we present it to the state, can the state come back and say, yeah, we don't like this, whatever, you know? Can they change the parameters that are being presented?
Ms. Gingrich to the state's review of this, if it were to pass.
So so as long as our district meets the requirements, which we've checked the spreadsheet a lot, many, many times. And we did actually submit it for a pre-adoption review. They pointed out a couple of things that we need to change. We made those changes. So as long as it meets the requirements, that's it. They, they wouldn't make any changes to it.
Thank you. And then if, just one last comment. Bringing up the MSBA grants, while we don't know what they could do, that's fear-mongering. You cannot say that that money is going to be taken away from us. That is a separate issue. We are very well into that. So to bring that up, to say that that's probably at, at a loss for us, that is not factually based. Thank you.
Karen West to Birchwood Road. I'd like to make a motion to move the question.
Madam Clerk, I'm not sure how this one's going to go.
Well, let's see.
All right. You've heard me say this now for a third time, but a motion to move the previous question would effectively end debate. It would allow the maker of the main motion, which would be Mr. Boland, up to 10 minutes to address the assembly. If he so chooses, he could yield his time to any other member or he could give his time back to the meeting. If you are in favor of the motion to move the previous question, otherwise end debate, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Got the point. If you're opposed, say no.
No.
It is voted. Article one does have a majority vote. However, I am sensing a house divided. So I would ask the tellers to take their place for another standing vote. All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you are wishing to vote on this, I would ask that you find your way to a seat. If you are in favor of Article one as presented in the warrant, please rise in your, in your seat and present your cerulean voter card. All right, you may be seated. All right, if you are opposed to Article one, I would ask that you rise in your seat, if you are able, and display your cerulean voter card. All right, you may be seated. While those votes get tallied up, I did just want to take a moment to thank our tellers who have clearly got their steps in today. All right, ladies and gentlemen, on Article one, the vote is as follows. 154 in the affirmative, 288 in the negative, the pleasure fair. All right, ladies and gentlemen, all matters on the warrant being disposed of. And as I am currently late to a Christmas party, you may in law sauce. I would ask for a motion to dissolve the meeting. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Voted.